Friends.
I don't know, I understand, no. For that purpose, too close.
You're way early.
The longest five minutes of the day.
Hmm?
The longest five minutes of the day.
It is.
I thought I was waiting for dismissal at school, but. How about them thunderstorms?
It was wild. I think Roxanne put my stuff on your desk.
Put your printouts. Unless you want them.
I'll take it. Unless you need some.
This one I didn't have a hard copy of. Oh, Mel's? Yeah, does Mel?
Yeah.
Is Mel not gonna be here?
I don't know, but there are printouts there, too.
We can wait, we can wait, if she needs them. You good?
I don't.
Yeah, cuz you told me you don't want the printers.
Just cluttered my desk at home. And then see my wife over there? She usually gets angry because I leave stuff all over the desk. And see, look, she's giving me the eye.
And there she is. It's all good.
Good thing or the bad thing to have my seat.
Is just get here early, try all of them.
I don't know either.
Musical chairs.
I think there's an order.
Good to know, good to know.
Good to know.
So it's the meeting miracle.
Does that make?
Miracle. I don't know what it really does.
Take slow.
Normally I walk over and I normally.
Next Tuesday.
What'd you say?
I said I normally leave my house like 5:53. I'll walk over.
I had to get a, I wanted to get a.
Yeah, totally.
I was like, I had to get there.
I didn't know about this, checking out the chairs.
I think it works best.
Yeah. Oh, is it leaning to the left?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I've dealt with him in the past.
Ask for donations.
Yeah, just make them up as you go.
I mostly do like two or three stitches, yeah, it's not a pattern, really.
Right.
Actually, we're, folks, we're not calling to order until 6:00 P.M. We do have one item that is, that precedes the call to order. And that is welcoming everyone, so welcome everyone. And ceremonial swearing in of mayor and councillors. So would you like to do, you can do us all as a group, it's up to you, or?
Do you mind? I'm good.
Okay, would everyone please stand, our councillors who are being sworn in? Would you please stand? I'm sorry.
These councillors that are being sworn in. Okay, Amanda, Tom, and Sonia. I solemnly swear or affirm that I will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont, and that I will not directly or indirectly do any act or injurious thing to the constitution or government thereof. So help me God, or under pains and penalties of perjury.
So help me God.
All right? The next one. I, Sonia, Tom, and Amanda, do solemnly swear to affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of councillor, mayor, councillor, for the state of Vermont, and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of my judgment and ability according to the law. So help me God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury.
So help me God.
So help. Okay, congratulations. Sixty more seconds.
We good, Teddy?
It is 5:59, ah, there we go, six o'clock.
Okay, then I will call this meeting of the Berry City Council to order. It's 6:00 P.M. on May 21, 2024. This meeting is subject to Vermont's open meeting laws. We do have a remote participation option, which admittedly, I have never presided over a hybrid meeting. So if I miss someone online, don't be afraid to throw a pen at me or something. And like I said, we'll take speakers in order. One other item of business, council. We do traditionally appoint a deputy mayor. By tradition, that is the longest-serving member of council. That is currently councillor Wabashak. So does anyone have any objection to that?
Can.
Or a discussion?
Is it mandatory that it be the longest-serving member of council?
No, it's not mandatory, it's just always, it's made it pretty easy to choose whoever's the longest-serving. I am open to suggestion, it's a council decision.
Well, I'd like to nominate Sam Stockwell.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, Sam it is. Okay, council, we're at item two. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Nicholas, I did note that you wanted under 3A, just after Visitors and Communications, Approval of Resolution 2024-09. And then you also add that we added to the consent agenda, item 4F, resignation of Joe Mueller from the homelessness task force.
Correct, yep, no other adjustments.
No other adjustments from the manager, council? Any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, under Visitors and Communications, is there anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Yes, ma'am. Would you please state your name so the clerk can get it in the record? I know you, but.
Hello, I'm Kat Allen, I live in Ward 1. And I am on the Parks and Rec Committee. And we need additional members. So this is my call to the public, for anyone who's listening or watches the recording later, that we would love additional members for Parks and Rec. Plus, if anyone at home has teens who would like to be on the committee, it's my understanding that every committee can have two high schoolers that don't account for our numbers, right?
Correct.
So if you like doing things in town and you wish that there were also more fun things to do in town, Parks and Rec can make it happen. So please sign up.
Thank you, Kat. Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Have you had a conversation with Garrett Graham? Because he does fabulous work with teens.
I have.
Okay, good.
Yes, so not part of Parks and Rec. We have had chats with Garrett for Berry Social Club about engaging with the teens at the Aldridge. But we can just let those two bleed over, absolutely.
Cool.
Yeah.
Terrific, and Kat, we will be having a discussion a little later on in the agenda. We'll be talking about council liaisons to different committees, as well as current vacancies on the committees as well, but thank you for speaking up.
I know about the liaison nominations, I am ready.
Thank you very.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Anyone else under Visitors and Communications? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
We have the resolution.
I'm sorry, you're correct. Item 3A, Resolution 2024-09. Ms. City Clerk, would you do the orders?
Certainly. Berry City Resolution 2024-09, a resolution in appreciation of Berry City Emergency Medical Services staff on the occasion of the 50th anniversary of National Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, the Berry City Fire and Emergency Medical Services Department consists of emergency medical technicians, advanced emergency medical technicians, paramedics, educators. And whereas the staff of Berry City Fire and Emergency Medical Services Department are prepared to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, emergency medical services are vital to public safety. And whereas, quick access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, May 19 through the 25th, 2024, marks the 50th year anniversary of National Emergency Medical Services Week. And this year's theme is honoring our past, forging our future, which reminds us to acknowledge the work of those who built the profession, while also recognizing those who are building the professional of the future. Now, therefore, be it resolved on the occasion of National Emergency Medical Service Week, that the Berry City Council recognizes our emergency medical services staff and thanks them for their valuable contributions to the community and dedicated service to the residents of Berry City. Be it further resolved that the city council hereby extends its fullest appreciation to all our emergency medical services staff and acknowledges that they are an important part of what makes Berry City a safe and special place to live, work, and recreate by the order of the city council this 21st day of May 2024.
Thank you, is there a motion to approve, please?
Still moved.
Moved? Seconded, thank you very much. It's moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, council. And a round of applause for our. Counsel, that brings us to the consent agenda. Items A through E are as warned and published. We did add this evening item 4F, which is Joe Mueller's resignation from the homelessness task force. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, before?
Yes.
So I have a question. I have a conflict of interest because of my company. The city buys things from my company. And so I do not, I would like to abstain from approving warrants.
Okay.
So I'm not sure how to do that under.
In all instances?
Well, this instance is definitely on. Well, no, I mean, it depends when they're on the warrant.
Yeah, it's part of the consent agenda, so you would have to just abstain from voting.
From the entire thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Or we could, if you go strongly, we could take it separately.
I will ask for abstentions anyway, at the end.
Okay.
So is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Still moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Okay, you just have to give me some time, I'll settle back in. It's moved, moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and your abstention is noted, Counsel Spalding. Thank you very much. City Clerk and Treasurers report, the inaugural. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations on the election.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so we have two weeks of warrants we need to approve. And we'll hand them off. Dated 5/15/2024, dated 5/22/2024.
Okay, thank you very much. And I used to stop by, I apologize, I used to stop by the clerk's office to get my signature on these pending council approval. And I did not remember to do that today, so I apologize. Anything else to report, ma'am?
I do have to report that there were two ward ballot recounts done today for Ward 1 between Sonia Spalding and Edward Russe. The results were exactly what they were on the election day. Sonia Spalding with 332 votes, Edward Russe with 318 votes. Ward 2, city council was recounted as well. Amanda Guston received her 235, as she had during the original election. Michael Booton, his count went from 228 to 229 because there was an overvote that the tabulator had counted. And it had been determined that it was a clear vote for Michael Booton. So the final result for Ward 2 is 235 to 229, with Amanda winning that ward. That's all I have, there are no permits or licenses to review.
Okay, thank you, any questions for the city clerk? How you doing so far?
So far, so good. I got Carol by the side, so I'm doing good.
You're gonna do fine, I'm sure. Anything under the liquor or cannabis control boards?
Nothing, not this week.
Okay, Mr. Manager, have you got a report for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I just want to start off by saying thank you to the voters for approving the city budget, the street sidewalks and equipment fund, and moving Town Meeting Day to May. We are, and I see Don's in the room, or was in the room. We're proud of this budget, it was a really difficult budget. Don, department head, put a lot of time and effort into it. And I think we presented a responsible budget. And there's very few times when we get direct indication from the voters on the job we're doing. But we appreciate knowing from the voters on Town Meeting Day that they supported the product we put before them. So thank you to the voters who showed up and supported our spending plan for the coming year. We'll continue to work hard to keep the trust of the residents, and if we haven't earned it yet, to work hard to earn it as well. Last week, I participated with Tess Taylor in Architectural Charette, and Counsel Stockwell was there, in an Architectural Charette at the auditorium on Thursday, just a really great experience. This is a, I'd never been to one before, it's where architects get together and just do on-the-spot drawings and designs. And we had two very specific projects. One was a redesign of Desro's property as a potential buyout and flood mitigation park. And then the other one, which Counsel Stockwell and I participated in, was sort of visioning for the cluster of homes on 2nd and 3rd Street that we have extended purchase options to. And so seeing what could be there, what kind of building could be there, housing could be, come up on that site. So really, really great visions, I know I had a great time there. And it was good to sort of get a vision for sort of that next step of flood recovery on two really important projects, and two different projects. One being a floodplain park and the other being housing. We are engaged, myself and Janet, with CVRPC on a transit-oriented development grant that's really kicking into gear. This was a $100,000 award that we received last year, which is to support development aligned with transit options. We are working with, the state has hired consultants to guide this work, and Jan and I are working with them and the CVRPC, focusing on core downtown, long-term opportunities. We're also, Stephanie Clark, who works with us on TIF, is also working on this project, so there's some good synergy there, getting some feedback from stakeholders and really focusing on the downtown core. Just want to update the council that unfortunately, we did not receive any offers on our letter of interest for Wabi Park. That solicitation closed Friday, May 10. It's disappointing, but not unexpected. And I think really shows the difficulty and barriers in new construction. I mean, here was a .41 acre, completely flat site out of the floodplain. And I know it's a challenging location, but still a really buildable one. So disappointing, but as I said, not something that was totally unexpected. On the recreation front, just want to highlight, we have open turf scheduled for the rest of the school year. That was released last week. We're doing Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays, 3:00 to 6:00 P.M. And then Saturdays from 10:00 A.M. to 3:00 P.M. So encourage folks who haven't been on the turf, it's a great place to play. And it is free of charge. So go out and enjoy, it's a great place to spend some time, get some energy out. We are also looking for lifeguards. So several of our outstanding lifeguards won't be returning from last year due to graduations. It's a great way to spend the summer. You get paid to hang out at the pool. So we have, it's listed on our website. Also, if you're interested, just contact me directly. We'll make you get through the process. But pool will be opening here before we know it. So I want to make sure if you're interested in lifeguarding, contact me, and we'll get you hired. And then Kat sort of stole my thunder a little bit, but committee applications are way down. And I know we'll be talking about it a little bit later. But if we don't get volunteers to show up, many committees won't be able to meet for lack of quorums. So just want to encourage, like Kat did, anybody who's watching, who's interested in serving, this is a pretty good time to jump up and do it, and get involved. And then thank you to the council for the adjustment to the agenda on National EMS Week. It also happens to be National DPW Week. And our public works staff does really, really great work in really difficult circumstances. So, you know, just want to recognize them as well. In our Times Argus ad, we had a shout-out to them for the great work that they do with really under-resourced circumstances for many years. And then just lastly, want to thank Mark Girardi from Butera and Girardi for the new nameplates for everybody, including the new councillors. He had to turn these around really quick, and he did a really nice job. So I want to thank Mark for indulging our timeframes to make sure that everyone had their new nameplate for today's meeting. So that's all for me.
Any questions, folks? Got a few, Counsel Stockwell.
I just want to go back to the contract to replace the pumps. So I saw that the date was limited for the estimate. It was limited to like May 15, but it's probably not going to increase by much past that date?
No, we don't expect it to, no.
The other thing was that, are the pumps going to be located somewhere differently? Because I could see that there was soil testing, so I assume that it either never happened in the past, or they're going to be relocated?
You know, I don't know, Counsel, I can check with Brian and I can follow up with you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel Wazak.
Do you have any next steps in mind for the Wabi Park? Or you just put it on the back burner for now?
Um, I, you know, I think, we're gonna do some brainstorming on it. I mean, when I think about the north end, that's a really low barrier opportunity because we own it, because it's flat, because it's out of the floodplain. So, you know, I'd love to engage with the folks who are working on the seminary street lot to understand, and any other developers about what the barriers were to putting in a letter of interest. Because I think I can guess at what they are, but I think knowing what those are and maybe figuring out what we can do about them will guide sort of what a next step is. But when I think about the north end, that's, you know, it's something we own, it's something that is easy to prepare for development. So I don't want to give up on it quite yet, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, council. We'll move on to new business under 8A, VLCT Council Essential Training. Mr. Baxter? How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Very good.
I didn't know how we were going to work this. Were you going to move the slides?
Yeah, I can move them for you.
Okay.
Just say next, and I will get you there.
Yeah, they, it gets everyone, sorry.
The other one might be better.
Such as you.
But probably not.
They were free, though, Garrett, so.
Step one of municipal training, taking the free chairs.
Uh, no, not really, right, sorry.
It's all right. It's good, though, it puts you all in a higher position of power. It's a shrink-down.
Not always a good thing.
Well, thank you for having me here again. Again, my name is Garrett Baxter, I'm Senior Staff Attorney with the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Municipal Assistance Center. And I'm here to do a training on Vermont's three transparency laws, is the same training I basically did last year. Nice to see familiar faces and some new people, so it'll be a refresher for most of you, and introduction for the rest. So for anyone unfamiliar with VLCT, we are an independent, nonprofit, nonpartisan, membership-based organization. We're wholly owned by and serving all of Vermont's municipalities, so we're your organization. Our mission is to serve and strengthen Vermont local government. So we're a resource for you, so please utilize us. The Municipal Assistance Center, which is the education and training arm of VLCT, is comprised of myself, our Executive Director Abby Friedman, our Research and Information Associate Heather Law, and we have three other staff attorneys, Carl Landair, Susan Senning, and Kale Romanoff. And together, our job collectively, to provide you with the education, training, and professional assistance you need to carry out your statutory roles and responsibilities. So again, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the trio of Vermont's Sunshine Laws, the Vermont's Open Meeting Law, the Public Records Act, and Conflict of Interest Provisions. These laws, three laws, cover a lot of ground. We typically spend about an hour and a half on each one. But it's unrealistic, unreasonable to expect you to sit through four and a half hours of presentations and expect you to actually process and retain it all. So the goal for tonight's presentation is to be much shorter. And just to raise your awareness of these laws. If you have questions about them, please email us, give us a call. We're gonna cover the basics, hopefully give you a firm foundation from which to work. A lot of the finer details about these laws can be found in our frequently asked question resources that you can find on our website, the links to which I have on the last page of the slide. And I believe, hopefully, you all have handouts of tonight's presentation.
Great.
So you'll likely have some questions as we move through. We don't have a lot of time, so if you wouldn't mind just holding off till the end or jotting them down on your notes, and then we'll get to them then. Next slide, please. So before we dive into the substance of the presentation, I just want to say a quick word about municipal governance charters. The laws that I'm going to cover tonight are laws of general applicability, meaning that they apply to all municipalities in the state, villages, cities, towns, et cetera. But not all municipalities follow the same laws all the time. Some have special laws that apply only to them, and those are what a municipal governance charter is. So a charter is a special, granted special legislation to an individual municipality, allowing it to deviate from the general law that would otherwise apply. Any municipality in Vermont can have one, and municipalities adopt them for a whole host of reasons. They can be found in Appendix, the Appendix, the Title 24 of Vermont Statutes Annotated, which are the green books that are in the clerk's office. And Berry Cities can be found in Chapter 1. Performed just a cursory review of the charter for Berry City and added its provisions to the laws that follow where appropriate. But you're all likely to be more familiar with them than I am. So just be aware, wherever there's a conflict between state law and your charter, your charter is going to control because it's the one that's more specific. Next slide, please. So with all that out of the way.
That's the right one, right?
I think one back. Here we go. We're gonna start with Vermont's Open Meeting Law. Violations of the public trust can occur when transparency in local government is obscured. So creating an atmosphere of openness and disclosure is the best method to achieve transparency in governmental operations. And all begins with complying with these three laws. And we'll start with Vermont's Open Meeting Law. Next slide. So what is the Open Meeting Law, and why do we have it? Very generally, the Open Meeting Law regulates meetings of governmental public bodies. It does this by establishing certain minimum standards for meetings as a way of ensuring government accountability. The Vermont Supreme Court tells us that the purpose of the Open Meetings Law is to give public exposure to governmental decision-making. This law advances the openness, accessibility, and transparency of public meetings to enable the public to serve both as an active participant in your meetings, as well as a check on local government. In this regard, the Open Meeting Law implements the state constitutional principle that all government. all government officers are trustees in service of the people and are at all times accountable to them. So we have the Open Meeting Law therefore to hold you all accountable for the words you say and the actions you take. Next slide, please. But who exactly does the Open Meeting Law apply to? It applies to every public body of a municipality. The law defines that term to include all boards, councils, committees, commissions, of political subdivisions of the state, which includes municipalities. This is an intentionally very broad term and includes two groups. The first is any statutory public body. Those bodies explicitly mentioned in Vermont law, such as the City Council, Cemetery Commission, Development Review Board. The second group consists of any board, body, committee, or commission created by one of those statutory public bodies, including any that were formed by the City Council. So the definition of public body states that includes any committee of any of the foregoing boards, councils, or commissions. The word "of" in that sentence imparts agency when one party acts on behalf of another. So part of the analysis in determining whether a group is a public body therefore is asking whether there was some delegation of authority, whether there was some formal resolution creating the public body, or some formal acknowledgement in the meeting minutes that it would be recognized as a public body to act on the city council's behalf or to further its interests. If so, then it's most likely a public body and will need to follow the requirements of the Open Meeting Law. To avoid such confusion, it's important to distinguish in your minutes between those times when you, as a city council, create a public body and those times when you're just collaborating with a group of concerned or interested citizens that come before you. Next slide. So all local governmental public bodies are governed by the Open Meeting Law, but when does it apply? It applies whenever you're holding a meeting, which the law defines as a gathering of a quorum of the members of a public body for the purpose of discussing the business of the public body or for the purpose of taking action. Next slide, please. So breaking that definition down, we see there are three elements that must be present in order for the requirements of the Open Meeting Law to apply. One, there needs to be a public body. Two, there needs to be a quorum of the public body present. And three, that quorum must be gathered to take action or to discuss the business of the public body. If all three elements aren't in place, then there can be no meeting and the Open Meeting Law doesn't apply. So we've already gone over the first element by defining what a public body is. The second is that there must be a gathering of a quorum of the members of the public body. Quorum represents the minimum number of members a public body needs in order to hold a meeting. Unless the law specifically states otherwise, the general rule for counting a quorum is a simple majority, 50% plus one of the total membership of the public body. Section 303 of your Charter says that a majority of the city council shall consist of a quorum for the transaction of business, and Section 301 Subsection 1 says that the city council shall consist of the mayor and two counselors for each ward who shall serve for a term of two years. Since Barry City has three wards, that makes for six counselors plus the mayor, which makes for a total of seven on your city council. That means you'll need at least four members, which is a majority of the total membership of the city council to hold the meeting. This represents your bare quorum number. Now, when it comes to counting a board's quorum number, you count the number of chairs at the table, not the number of people in them. This necessarily means that this number will remain the same regardless of whether a member abstains, recuses themselves, or if there are absences or vacancies on the council. This bare quorum number will also be the minimum number of members you need to be in agreement to take any action, which is always going to be four. Third and final element is that the quorum of the public body must be gathered to take action or discuss the business of the public body. And business of the public body has a specific statutory definition, and that is the public body's governmental functions, including any matter over which the public body has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory powers. Basically then, any matter to be discussed or action to be taken that pertains to the duties of the city council will be considered its business, given its broad statutory powers that the business of the council virtually will cover any issue having to do with the city. Next slide, please. Once all three elements are met, there's a gathering of quorum of the members of the public body for the purpose of discussing the business of the body or for taking action, the Open Meeting Law is triggered and you have to follow its requirements. And those requirements include publicly noticing your meetings. Notice requirements are different under law depending on whether you're holding a regular, special, or emergency meeting. Creating and posting an agenda for all regular and special meetings. Your meeting agendas can only be added to or deleted from, as we saw tonight, as the first course of business of your meeting, so it's a good idea to always have that listed as the first item of your agenda or close to it. There's no requirement to have an agenda for an emergency meeting because those are only held for unforeseen occurrences or emergencies, and you don't know that's going to happen. Keeping your meetings open to the public unless an explicit statutory exemption applies, and providing a reasonable opportunity for the public to comment on your meeting agenda subject to reasonable rules of procedure designed to maintain order. And five, taking minutes to provide a true indication of the business of the meeting and posting them within five calendar days of your meeting. Next slide, please. Not everything you do as a public body, however, is governed by the Open Meeting Law. The law does carve out some discrete exceptions where communications between a quorum of members is permissible without triggering the requirements of the Open Meeting Law. These include scheduling a meeting, organizing an agenda, or distributing materials to other members to discuss at your meeting so long as no other business of the body is discussed, and that any resulting written communication is made available for inspection and copy and in accordance with Vermont's Public Records Act, which we'll talk about next. The Open Meeting Law also doesn't apply when a quorum of council members attend social gatherings, conventions, conferences, training programs such as this one, press conferences, media events, or otherwise gathers, provided that those attending don't discuss any business that at the time they expect to be taken up as business at a later date. And finally, a quorum of members of the public body may gather at a duly-worn meeting of another public body, provided that the attending body doesn't take any action on its own business. Next slide. There are also several exemptions to the Open Meeting Law for you to be aware of. There are times, these are the times when the law would ordinarily apply, but due to the nature of your meeting, they're exempt from its requirements. And the two big ones that get most frequently tossed about and confused are deliberative and executive sessions. An executive session is a closed portion of an open meeting, by which I mean you first have to meet in an open session and then vote as a board to enter executive session. It can only be used for discussion of specific statutory reasons provided for in the law. It's important to keep in mind that the use of executive session will be strictly construed by courts against you, which means that any reasonable doubt as to whether the exemption applies will be resolved in favor of keeping your meetings open to the public. So in other words, when it comes to executive session, the general rule of thumb to follow is when in doubt, stay out. In contrast, deliberative session is only held in conjunction with quasi-judicial hearings, which is when a body acts like a court. So a city council acts like a, in this capacity, when it hears dogfight cases or tax appeals as members of the Board of Civil Authority. Deliberative session allows public bodies to deliberate in private, just like a jury does, so that they may freely weigh, examine, and discuss reasons for or against decisions based upon evidence received during a public hearing. And just to clarify, because there seems to be a lot of confusion over this, despite its name, you can't just use deliberative session whenever you want to make a tough decision. You can only use it when you need to make a decision after holding a court-like hearing. So while neither of these exemptions, executive or deliberative session, have to be used, there certainly will be times when using them will be in the best interest of the city, and that's where your judgment comes into play. The Open Meeting Law also exempts from its requirements site inspections for purposes of assessing damage or making tax assessments or abatements, clerical work or work assignments of staff, and routine day-to-day administrative matters that don't require action by the public body, provided no money is expended. In terms of how you conduct your meetings, the law allows for in-person meetings, hybrid meetings, as you're holding tonight, and for the time being until July 1st of this year, to meet remotely without designating a physical location for the public to attend. Now ordinarily, gathering electronically would require designating at least one physical location where the public can also attend your meetings. However, the state with the passage of Act 1 in 2023 temporarily lifted this particular requirement, the Open Meeting Law, so that you can meet entirely remotely without also having a physical meeting location. This temporary law also allows public bodies to electronically post meetings, meeting agendas, and special meeting notices. Again, it's set to expire or sunset on July 1st of this year, but until then, you can continue to hold entirely remote meetings so long as you use technology that allows the public to attend, allows the public to access the meeting by telephone, includes and posts information on your meeting agenda that enables the public to electronically access and participate in your meeting, and record your meetings if it's a meeting of the city council unless unusual circumstances make it impossible to do so. Next slide, please. Now, as I'm sure you've all heard, the legislature made some big changes to the Open Meeting Law with the passage of S-55 this past session. This bill was passed on the last day of the session, and it still, I believe, has to be signed by the governor before it comes law. I don't think that's happened quite yet, but we fully expect them to do so. The effective date of the bill is July 1st of this year, though it does have new training requirements, those go into effect until July 1st of 2025. The bill makes a distinction, and I think there's already been a lot of discussion I've seen on listservs about this, between advisory bodies and non-advisory bodies. Advisory bodies are those that don't have supervision, control, or jurisdiction over legislative, quasi-judicial, tax, or budgetary matters. And non-advisory bodies are those that do. So the city council would be a non-advisory body. An advisory body, the way I look at it is to keep it simple. If it advises and doesn't make any final decisions, it's an advisory body. So if you have an advisory budget committee, they're an advisory body. A planning commission could be both an advisory body because it advises the city council as to amendments to the town zoning regulations or to the city plan, but if it acts in a quasi-judicial capacity and hears permits, it could also be a non-advisory body. So it's going to depend on the function of the particular public body at times. So after July 1st of this year, municipal advisory bodies, they're going to retain the ability to meet completely remotely. They can meet in person or hybrid. So Act 1 requirements are going to still apply to them in terms of holding completely remote meetings. After July 1st of this year, municipal non-advisory bodies are going to return to the law pre-Act 1, and they're no longer going to be able to meet virtually without also designating a meeting location unless there are special circumstances, so-called local incidents as defined in the law, or for emergency meetings, which is new. So that's a great addition. In addition, and this is the one that's going to put an additional requirement under the Open Meeting Law on you, is that for all municipal non-advisory bodies, which includes the city council, you're going to need to record your meetings and post the recordings to your website, if you have one, for 30 days. You're not retaining it for 30 days and then getting rid of it. That's just the requirement, the 30 days for posting it on the website. There's a separate retention schedule for how long you have to keep the recording, which is, still has to be made available as a public record until it's disposed of. So there's lots of questions about this law. We hope to address most, if not all of them, in our forthcoming legislative session wrap-up, which should be out in the following days, and we'll also be developing resources and answering some questions about them that we'll make available to you all as well. And finally, should all be aware of, next slide, please, that there are some consequences for violating the Open Meeting Law. These include potential criminal liability for any individual who knowingly and willingly violates the law, a civil lawsuit against the offending public body, and the risk that any action you take becomes null and void. The main takeaway when it comes to penalties is to avoid all intentional violations of the Open Meeting Law, obviously, in the contact either our office or your city council, if you find that you've committed any inadvertent violation or if you received a written complaint alleging that a violation has occurred. Next slide, please. We can actually stop there. I'll just mention again, if you'd like to learn more about Vermont's Open Meeting Law, I encourage you to visit our website's resources page on this topic. Next slide, please. Here you'll find all the resources listed on this slide and more, including a brand-new effective meeting toolkit and our Open Meeting Law FAQs that I mentioned earlier, which are answers to questions we have received on this topic over the years. And before we go into, next slide, please, the Public Records Act, I guess this would probably be a good time to just stop and see if you have any questions about what we've talked about so far.
Counsel, anyone? I had a question regarding social media and discussions that occur. If there are, I mean, we all understand that text messaging, if you involve four members of, for example, this body, if it was a group text message that is public record, that is a meeting, and it needs to be printed and retained in the clerk's office, and I think everybody understands that, but social media is a tough one. You know, there are different groups, topics often turn to individuals or city business. If there are four counselors participating in that group and thread, how does, how does that work?
Yeah, so there's no temporal element to the Open Meeting Law's requirements. So you talked about earlier, if there's a quorum of members on a text and they're discussing business of the public body back and forth, then not only does, would those conversations need to be retained, but that's most likely a violation of the Open Meeting Law. Whenever you have a quorum of the members of the body discussing its business, then that's intended by the legislature to be held in front of the public. Same thing with social media. So we've looked at, Vermont doesn't have as much case law as other states on this topic, but ones that we have looked at have held, that have laws similar to ours, have held that serial one-to-one communications between members, whether it's by text or whether it's on Facebook or other social media platforms, regardless of the fact that they're not in real time. Once they, once they include a quorum of the members of the board, then the Open Meeting Law requirements are triggered. So we would say to avoid arriving at a quorum, avoid those conversations, not knowing that someone may come along from the city council and also comment on it. So I would say be very wary of that. Now, the legislature did realize the difficulties of boards and communicating with each other outside of meetings and how infrequently they meet. So they do allow you to schedule meetings, to develop an agenda, and to distribute information to each other outside of the context of the Open Meeting Law, so long as you're not discussing the substance of those materials. So when it comes to email, we usually say, you know, one-way distribution is fine, don't reply all. I would include that in my email messages to members and also to not talk about the substance of any business. Once you get into a back and forth, those are the types of things that the legislature intends for you to discuss in front of the public. So when it comes, again, a court is going to rule liberally in favor of holding these discussions in public session. So I would err on the side of caution, and I don't see that a court is going to allow an end around the intent of the Open Meeting Law, which again, is to discuss public business in front of the public.
Thank you. Oh, there's a question in the audience. Mr. Bruton?
We got a question about Michael Bootman. You got a question? I was expecting Sonya to ask a question. So the question that I have is regarding blind copying amongst board members. So let's say Sonya's having a conversation with Michael, and she carbon copies, everybody has a blind carbon copy. Does that, is that something that is a bad or good practice?
Just a caveat here, I'm actually counsel for the city council, so I can't answer citizen questions directly. It potentially becomes a conflict of interest for me, but if it's a scenario, it's general enough, if the council is happy with me addressing, I'll be.
I have no objection.
Yeah, okay. So basically, no, blind CC So basically, no, blind CC is fine, again, so long as it comports with what I had outlined earlier, which is that there's not a substantive back and forth. So in the instance of one member emailing another member and blind copying the rest, it's a one-way discussion. So it's only really when there's that, again, that back and forth where we're having a discussion about city business and it implicates a quorum of the members.
It can get a little tricky, can't it?
It can, definitely, which is, which is why, again, we advise, we usually provide the most conservative legal advice possible so that you stay above board and not even have to face someone alleging a violation, because it can get confusing, and to err on, again, on the side of caution.
So, so let's say there's a thread on social media and two counselors like it, and it's a thread of someone painting crosswalks in the city, the DPW, and two counselors like it, and that, and that's the extent of their participation, they just liked it, but they are part of that thread. And then someone, and then citizens start commenting on why isn't the city doing more or why isn't this happening, and two other counselors jump in and defend the city a little bit and say, well, this is our policy and this is what we're going to do in the future, and is that, do you have, if you had two counselors simply liking the post because they saw DPW doing it, and then two counselors jumping in, which clearly is not a quorum, is, does the fact that two counselors initially participated and are part of that thread create a quorum?
Right, because as you're meeting tonight, not necessarily everyone is going to be making a statement. So the, the open meeting law doesn't necessarily require your kind of affirmative participation in that regard. So it's a question, these are all questions of first impression, meaning that a court hasn't decided them yet. So again, I would avoid triggering that quorum. One way a town, or a city can do this is having someone designated as kind of the social media liaison on behalf of the council and having them, and having them respond to Facebook postings, et cetera, tweets, what have you. And it may be that you designate one to do that for different topics, but that way, because it is a powerful tool for communicating with your constituency, and you don't want to lose that ability by having your hands tied by the open meeting law. But again, once you trigger that quorum and you're talking about public business, then, you know, likely it's implicating the open meeting law.
Provided, provided this actual input from the counselors, or what if four counselors liked something?
Right, but like you said, if someone liked that, is that...
But nothing further, no comment.
Right, and it does say, it does say discuss, but in, you know, signifying their approval of something, you're getting a sense of, you know, how the council feels about a particular topic.
Understood.
So I would just always be wary of that quorum number.
Got you. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the Public Records Act. The next two are a little shorter. So Public Records Law Act is a law that defines what a public record is, who can see it, and how and when it can be accessed, and what happens when the law is violated. It's not to be confused with the Freedom of Information Act or FOIA, which is the federal counterpart that gives people the right to access information from the federal government. Vermont's Public Records Act sets forth the terms and conditions by which the public can access government records in Vermont. Next slide, please. So why do we have this act? The law's statement of policy says that it exists for the free and open examination of public records consistent with Chapter 1, Article 6 of the Vermont Constitution. That provision of the Constitution tells us that all power being originally inherited and consequently derived from the people, therefore, all officers of government, whether legislative or executive, are their trustees and servants, and at all times in a legal way accountable to them. Public records document the legal responsibilities of government, help protect the rights of citizens, and provide them with the means of monitoring government programs and measuring the performance of public officials. So just as was the case with the open meeting law, the Public Records Act, by codifying the right to open access to public records, helps ensure that you, the government, are held accountable to its people. As the Vermont Supreme Court said, access to governmental records is a fundamental 保障 of our society, and a democracy cannot function unless the people are permitted to know what their government is up to. For this reason, the Public Records Act, according to the court, represents a strong policy favoring access to public documents and records. In furtherance of that goal, the law contains an instruction right in it to those who must comply with it and to the courts that must interpret it for it to be liberally construed in favor of access to public records, and for the burden of proof on withholding records to be on the government, which can be summarized by another general rule of thumb, which is when in doubt, provide the record. Next slide, please. It's important to understand that the law only applies or deals with public records as that term is defined by the law. It defines a public record as any written or recorded information, regardless of physical form or characteristic, which is produced or acquired in the course of agency business. So again, this is another intentionally very broad definition, and necessarily means that where a record is located won't always dictate whether it's public or not, whether, rather, it'll be whether the record was produced or acquired in the course of agency business. Nor is a pub, where is a public record limited to just a paper document, as this definition encompasses any written or recorded information, regardless of physical format. So taken together, this means that a public record can exist anywhere. It can be on your computer, whether work or personal, or even your smartphone. The use of a private, private accounts and personal devices, therefore, won't prevent an otherwise public record from being subject to inspection and copying from the public. In short, if a record is produced or acquired in the course of agency business or city business, it's a public record. Now, there may well be some exemption to that record's disclosure that applies, but we always start our analysis of any public records request by first assuming that all records are public, and then we go from there. Next slide, please. Who does the Public Records Act apply to? Law says any person may inspect or copy any public record of a public agency. So laws for the benefit of the public, every person has the right to access public records, whether they're a resident of the city or not, or whether they're a resident of Vermont or not. Generally speaking, it doesn't matter why someone wants a public record, so neither their identity nor their motives are relevant. On the flip side of the same coin, the responsibility for complying with the law lies with the public agency, but that can be a little confusing, because the law defines a public agency as any agency, board, committee, department, branch, instrumentality, or authority of any political subdivision of the state. So since municipalities are subdivisions of the state, this law applies to every city agency, board, committee, department, branch, commission, et cetera. So a public agency is more specific than just the city. It's the clerk's office, it's the manager's office, police department, buildings and community service, as well as the planning commission and the city council. Each of them is a public agency unto themselves for the purposes of this particular law. Next slide, please. But we need to drill down a little deeper than that. Who specifically is responsible for responding to requests for public records on the agency's behalf? Well, that gets a little confusing, but, so I'm going to jump ahead because your charter makes it easy. Next slide, please. It's the city clerk. So you get a request for a public record, go to the city clerk. Next slide, please. And that's great, and I wish a lot more communities did that, because otherwise you're having to determine whether someone was designated officially as the custodian of a record or whether they have it in their possession to make it available, and sometimes that can be multiple people. So this makes it a lot easier, not only for you to process requests, but for the public to make them. So since the clerk is the custodian of all city records, I won't spend too much time on how they must respond, however, you should be aware of the process, because any appeals of the clerk's determinations could come to you. The first, the law says that a person has the right to inspect or copy a public record during customary business hours, and that term unfortunately isn't defined by law, but it does define business day, which is a day that a public agency is open to provide services. So given that, we interpret customary business hours as those hours that the custodian's office, in this case, the city clerk's office, is open to provide services to the public. Next slide, please. So what exactly does the Public Records Act require the custodian to do when they receive a request? It says that when a request is made, that the custodian shall promptly produce the record for inspection or a copy of the record. Next slide, please. Promptly is used here means immediately, with little or no delay, but not more than three business days from the date of the receipt of the request. So we've already established that a business day is a day that the city clerk's office is open to provide services in this context, so the city clerk's office is open to the public Monday through Friday, and someone requests a public record on a Wednesday, then should produce it immediately for them if they can, but if they can't, then they have at least three business days from receipt of a request to produce it, which would mean the following Monday. And this definition of promptly is important, because as you'll see in the next slide, it appears often in this law, and just to complicate matters a little more, because we wouldn't need lawyers if the law was simple. There are four possible reasons for a public records request, each of which is dictated by the circumstances governing their status. And you'll note that all these responses require promptly communicating that record's status to the requister. Four possible responses are for the custodian to, one, promptly produce the record, two, promptly respond that the record doesn't exist, three, promptly respond that the record is exempt from public inspection and disclosure, or four, promptly respond that the record is an active use or storage, and to set a date and time within seven calendar days from receipt of the request when it will be made available. All four of these timeframes can be extended up to 10 business days from the original date of the request in the event of unusual circumstances, as that term is further defined by the law. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, at its core, the Public Records Act confers upon people the right to inspect or copy public records during customary business hours of, and of its custodian, and it imposes upon the city the legal obligation to promptly produce those records upon request. It also imposes some other obligations which you should be aware of, including holding hearings on appeals of custodian decisions, only charging those fees associated with copying or transmitting or creating a public record but not inspecting it, and not destroying or otherwise getting rid of public records except when specifically authorized by law to do so. In this regard, the Vermont State Archives and Records Administration, or VASARA, is charged by the Vermont Legislature, which, coming up with the retention schedules governing municipal records, working with local custodians, seeking individual disposition orders of the same, and educating local officials on records management best practices. They have a strong history of working one-on-one with municipalities to assist them with complying with records management responsibilities. They're a really great resource, they're your go-to people for all questions about how long to keep public records and, and how to keep them, so I've included their contact information here for you. Next slide, please. Again, if you'd like to learn more about Vermont's Public Records Act, I again encourage you to visit our website's resources page for more information. Here you'll find our Public Records Act frequently asked questions, presentation from VASARA about complying with your public records management responsibilities, as well as our model public records policy, which includes a model request and response form that you can use with your daily interactions with members of the public and make requests. And next slide, please. So our last, our last segment is on conflicts of interest, but before we do that, I just want to see if anyone has any questions about Vermont's Public Records Act. Yes, say it.
So in reality, anything that we're scribbling here about notes could become a public record, but in fact, it doesn't.
That's a great question. So this one is also kind of a question of first impression, but we would consider those personal notes that are exempt from disclosure. Now, there are some 256 statutory exemptions for not disclosing a public record. That is not one of them, but after looking at cases in other jurisdictions, it would appear that the line between what is someone's personal notes and whether they become public records turns on whether they've been distributing within agency channels and added to the files. So these are personal notes, they're transitory in nature, they're, and arguably, they're not records produced in the course of agency business, because they're being produced by yourself for your own convenience, to aid memory or reference. So in our opinion, they're outside the definition of what constitutes a public record, you don't even look for an exemption. This is in keeping with VASARA's treatment of such records, because if you go on their website, they classify them as transitory, which allows for disposition of them after they're obsolete, and really, only you are going to know whether your own personal notes are obsolete or not. So it only makes sense that they wouldn't be considered public in that regard.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes.
Very familiar with VASARA's work, they're phenomenal.
Yes.
I'm given, I'm an inbox zero person, so I'm given to understand that all my email gets filed and not deleted, I just want to explicitly name that.
Sure. So when we talk about email, hopefully everyone has a, a city account, so not using personal accounts, because if a record is requested and you've been utilizing your personal email, then we have a case, the Townsend case, that tells us that the city then has to ask those members to look through their personal emails to find those, if there are any public records inside them, which can make things difficult. It's also great when you're sending emails to each other that the custodian, I would recommend, be CC'd or blind copied, because then Cheryl doesn't have to come to you if a request is made for a particular record, she'll have a record of it on her own. So just the best practice there. Yes, but I would not delete any records unless you have a conversation with VASARA about a disposition order that authorizes its deletion. So almost done, thank you for hanging in there. Last section is on conflict of interest, and I feel really bad about this one, because as you'll see in a moment, this law is getting completely repealed, so, but for the time being, it is still in place. So what do we refer to when we talk about conflicts of interest? Next slide, please. So conceptually, conflicts are occasions when your private interests or the interests of those who are close to you are or appear to be in conflict with your public duty that you owe your office, the city, and the people you serve. That's not a statutory definition, that's just what conflicts conceptually are. And this can create a tension between your public and private lives that has the potential to impede your ability to exercise impartial judgment. According to Chapter 1, Article 7 of Vermont's Constitution, government exists for the benefit of people, not for, to advance the interests of any one person, so your first loyalty, therefore, as a public official, is, of course, to the people you serve. Next slide, please. Now, the city council has broad powers, and conflicts of interest can infect all three branches of local governments that it serves, executive, judicial, and legislative. But what's a conflict in one context may not necessarily be a conflict in another. So for instance, there exists this misperception that local legislative bodies, such as yourselves, must be impartial in all matters that come before you, and that's simply not the fact, the case. In fact, I dare say, most of you were elected on the basis of your political views. You don't lose your First Amendment right to free speech once you're elected to public office. As politicians, which, as elected officials, you all are, you're allowed to take positions on issues big and small, controversial and mundane. So publicly taking a position on an issue will not disqualify you from acting in either an administrative or legislative capacity, so long as doing so doesn't provide you with some advantage that's not afforded the rest of the general public, such, yeah, setting the tax rate. You benefit from that, but so does everyone from the general public. So bias, which is a preference or inclination that inhibits your impartial judgment, that typically only comes into play when you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity, and that's when it can be a disqualifying factor. So again, those are those instances when you're acting like a court presiding over road reclassifications or border health hearings, and bias may disqualify you from those proceedings because the Vermont Supreme Court has ruled that people have a right to a fair, full, and impartial hearing before a tribunal that entertains no bias against them. So managing bias in this appearance in a quasi-judicial context are important, not only to protect the party's constitutional rights, but also to preserve the public's confidence in the impartial administration of city business. Next slide, please. So in recognition of these risks that conflicts pose, the Vermont Legislature in 2017 enacted Act 79, which required every municipality in the state to... Act 79, which required every municipality in the state to adopt the conflict of interest prohibition by July 1, 2019. So this was the new regime that we had to all comply with, and it wasn't too long ago. And these prohibitions, at a minimum, had to include what a conflict of interest is. So you had to define it. You had to provide a list of the elected and appointed officials it covers, a method for determining whether a conflict of interest exists, actions that must be taken if one does, and a method for enforcement against violators. And today, every municipality in the state must now have a conflict of interest prohibition that contains these five basic elements. Next slide, please. So in addition to what state law requires, your charter also addresses conflicts in Section 311. It says, "No city official or employee shall be interested in any contract with the city, furnish any material, or perform any labor, except in the discharge of the official or employee's official duties, or as allowed for in the procurement policy or conflict of interest policy as adopted by the council." So this prohibition, your charter, actually reflects a Vermont Supreme Court case from 1919, which was Bergeron versus Jackson, in which a Burlington city official, who served as both alderman and street commissioner, entered into a contract with the city of Burlington for some bridge and staircase repairs. And though you'll find nothing in Vermont statutes, other than in your charter, that explicitly prohibits this type of financial self-dealing, it is one that will always be vulnerable to court challenge, as it constitutes a direct financial conflict of interest. So it's good that your charter has it in there. Next slide, please. When it comes to developing conflict of interest policy, there's simply no size fits all that works for every municipality. Your city's conflict of interest policy should set its own unique shared expectations for how conflicts will be handled, based on what exactly your community draws, where it draws the line between what's accessible conduct and what's not. So conflicts of interest, in this sense, live on a continuum. Different municipalities will probably have different definitions of what constitutes a conflict of interest, and they should. What may be a conflict in Barry City or Burlington won't necessarily be one in Maidstone or in Sheffield, where either. That's to be expected, as there tends to be greater propensity for conflicts, or at least the appearance of them, in smaller municipalities, where everyone knows your name, and where people are more likely to wear more than just one hat in town. Next slide. It's not enough, however, your policy simply defines what a conflict is. The law also requires your policy to include a method for determining whether a conflict of interest exists, and to prescribe what actions must be taken if it does. Our own model policy's approach can be boiled down into four easy-to-remember steps: disclosing the conflict, discussing it, considering recusal, and recording the process utilized in its resulting decision. One important thing to note here is that although recusal is often the best remedy, it unfortunately has a very significant limitation, which is that it's completely voluntary. It's a decision done entirely in one's own volition, and no one else can force you to recuse yourself. Whether a conflict of interest is present or appears to be present, the cleanest course of action, again, is complete recusal from the matter under consideration, as the appearance of a conflict oftentimes can be just as damaging as the conflict itself. It's important to keep in mind that the public's confidence is the currency of a council, and nothing will bankrupt it quicker than the unresolved presence or perception of a conflict that isn't addressed. Due to corum needs, however, recusal may not always be feasible. In those instances, it's important to remember that just because a member has a conflict of interest, doesn't necessarily mean that that member can't continue to participate in that proceeding. Determining whether something is a conflict of interest or not is really just the first step in the process. What you're really trying to figure out is whether the affected member will still be able to act impartially despite the presence of the conflict. The end goal here, then, is not just to ascertain whether a conflict of interest exists, but rather to figure out if that conflict is a disqualifying one. And that's one of the main points I want to take away from this training, that even though you may not always be able to avoid conflicts of interest with proper policies and procedures in place, you should be able to effectively manage them, and in doing so lessen and possibly even eliminate their potential negative impact. Next slide, please. And finally, the law also requires your conflict of interest prohibition that includes some enforcement mechanisms against violators. Our model policy provides that if the offender is an appointed official, you can either admonish them in public or private, request or demand their recusal, or you can remove them from office because they're an appointed official. Your options are a little bit more limited when it comes to elected officials, as like you, they're accountable only to the voters. So consequently, unless your charter provides otherwise, and I didn't see that it does, recalling or removing an elected official won't be a possibility. Instead, all you'd be able to do in that instance is to admonish them in public or private, request their recusal, or request their resignation. Next slide, please. If you don't currently have a prohibition in place, or if you're considering updating yours, our model policy, which again is available on our website, satisfies the law's basic And we include a definition of conflict of interest in our policy, but in our experience, the biggest issue in municipalities is for them to identify what a conflict is. So I would say, to use our definition as just a jumping-off point for a broader discussion about what is and what's not appropriate behavior in community and how it should be addressed, conflict of interest policy, a good one, will be the one that best reflects Barry City's own values. Next slide. And now that you've learned all about Vermont's conflict of interest law, I can tell you that it's all going away as of January 1, 2025. That's because the legislature passed H875, also on the last day of the session. Governor Scott hasn't signaled his position on the bill, which passed largely on party lines in both the House and the Senate. Should it become law, it does create a new uniform municipal code of ethics that most municipal officers will need to follow. It requires members of the legislative body, so the city council and quasi-judicial bodies as well, including also the chief administrative officer, so the manager, and the mayor, to take periodic training approved by the State Ethics Commission. It also requires municipalities to take, investigate, and enforce ethics complaints, and implements new record-keeping and reporting requirements. Also directs the State Ethics Commission to issue guidance and advisory opinions to municipalities regarding ethical conduct. So right now, we regularly answer questions from municipal officials about what may be a conflict of interest and how to handle it. Once this law goes into effect, we're most likely going to be directing you to the State Ethics Commission, because they're authorized by the legislature to provide guidance and advisory opinions. And as an attorney, the way to best protect the city's interest is to get that guidance or advisory opinion directly from the state. So we'll certainly fill in the gaps as best we can. And again, because these requirements don't go into effect until January 1 of next year, the training requirements don't go into effect until September 30 of next year, we'll be able, and the state, I'm sure, will be able to get some information out to you. Right now, I wouldn't be too concerned about it. This is largely parroting the state ethics code that they've been following, so they wanted to have some uniformity there. We'll provide you more information in our legislative wrap-up when that comes out in the next couple of weeks. But again, for the time being, follow your own conflict of interest policy. And that's, next slide, please. That's conflicts of interest in a nutshell. As with the Open Meeting Law and Public Records Act, you can find additional information on conflicts on our website's resources page. Next slide, please. And that concludes the overview of the three transparency laws. Just want to highlight again the links to our website's resources page on the Open Meeting Law, Public Records Act, and conflicts of interest have been referenced throughout. And before I turn it over to whatever questions you may have, I just want to invite you again to contact the Municipal Assistance Center if you have any questions going forward. You can do this through our map system. You can click on an Ask a Question button located on our website. You can email us at info@vlct.org, or always just give us a call at 802-229-9111. And that's 8:30 to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. With that, I'm happy to field any questions you have about anything we discussed so far tonight.
Yes, sir.
Totally unrelated, I heard you say that a member cannot be recalled for a conflict of interest. Is there a recall mechanism anywhere in Vermont statute?
Not in the laws of general applicability. Several municipal governance charters have them.
Okay.
But I did not see one in Barry.
I was just curious.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Karen.
Counsel, we're at Item 8B, that is, Berry Area Development Quarterly Report. I'm Ma Green. How are you?
I'm good.
Doing well, thank you.
Thank you for having us here today. Will someone be able to do the slides? Oh, great.
I have the case.
Thank you. My name is Ma Green. I'm the Executive Director of Berry Area Development, and I'm here to present our quarterly update to all of you. This chair is sinking into the ground as I go.
Yes.
I'm going to move chairs, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry.
So I'll just do a quick run-through of our table of contents. So next slide, please. I'll be reviewing Berry Area Development's benefits to the community, discussing our fiscal year '24 strategic initiatives and objectives, focusing on giving an update on our focus for the year and our accomplishments, including housing and economic strategy, business development, our plan for execution of our strategic plan, going through housing and business development updates, an overview of our first annual Economic Development Summit, an overview of our social media KPIs, our key performance indicators, an update on our conversion to a 501(c)(3), and then a brief update on our personnel recruitment. So next slide, please. So an overview of Berry Area Development's benefits to the community. We nurture, promote, sustain, and implement economic development in the community, both for the city and the town. We develop and work with varying funding sources to assist and sustain housing and business development in the community. We coordinate economic development services among varying local, state, and federal agencies that help to impact economic and housing development for the community. We collaborate with the Partnership and other private and not-for-profit government-sector organizations to provide joint marketing, business recruitment and retention, and support in the growth of housing. And we act as a point of contact for information and support regarding economic development in both municipalities. Next slide, please. Our fiscal year '24 and '25 strategy initiatives and objectives are to further growth in the Berry area through targeting regional and international demographics to relocate and grow businesses in Berry, with a parallel focus on helping to facilitate housing growth, continuing to build on our inventory platform for potential business owners of available commercial spaces, continuing to strengthen our connections with entrepreneurs and businesses throughout the state, and facilitating the annual Central Vermont Economic Development Summit. We had the first one, the inaugural one, in May of this year. Next slide, please. So our focus for fiscal year '24 and '25, as I mentioned, our three main focuses are housing and economic strategy, business development, and the execution of a strategic plan for the entire Berry area. Our accomplishments year-to-date, as you probably know, we were placed for the second year in a row, we being the Prospect Heights Development Project on the regional priority list. Pending all needed due diligence and potential grants, which I'll discuss in a minute, the development of the Prospect Heights Project would clearly be a wonderful solution to help make a dent in the housing crisis, not just for the immediate Berry area, but also for the central Vermont region, with up to 128 housing units. Successful applications are now underway with large federal granters for the approximated $6 million infrastructure project, which is the first phase of the project. Business development, ongoing Vermont regional, national, and international business recruitment and outreach, which includes successful business deployments and loan facilitations in Berry year-to-date. Details of all of this is provided monthly through our public board of directors meetings, and I'm going to review that also shortly in a few slides. Next slide, please. Our accomplishments continued year-to-date, discussing the strategic plan and the execution of a three-to-five-year plan for the Berry area. The strategic planning board retreats are now complete, which included full outreach to all stakeholders, and we are in the process now of preparing a final review of a proposed three-to-five-year strategic plan with a focus on Berry. For housing development, to address the pressing need for housing across all income levels by focusing on both affordable and market-rate housing options, through collaborating with the Housing Task Force to develop a comprehensive plan to address aging housing stock, including strategies for redevelopment and multi-income housing. Through economic development, focusing on business attraction, retention, and entrepreneurial efforts to support local businesses and stimulate economic growth, through working with existing businesses to help them foster their own growth and explore opportunities for new businesses to thrive in the Berry area. Through marketing and promotion, enhancing marketing efforts to showcase the positive aspects of Berry and attract visitors, residents, and businesses, emphasizing the city and towns amenities, recreational opportunities, and civic-minded businesses to highlight its vibrancy and appeal. And through community engagement and planning, for the continued building of relationships within the community, through fostering our relationships, working with organizations to develop comprehensive plans for housing development and community revitalization, and through leveraging partnerships and resources to achieve shared goals and objectives. Next slide, please. The next few slides are an overview of our work, starting with calendar year 2024, of our monthly work, broken out in these metrics here for January and February. With the first slide, I'll review the work we did with Prospect Heights. As mentioned before, we were placed in the number-one spot, the Prospect Heights Project for the regional priority list, in November of last year. In the January and February timeframe, we were busy at work drafting and reviewing proposed purchase-and-sale agreement between Fecta, who owns the land, and the city of Berry. We were working on commitment letters to provide the financial support. Those were drafted and reviewed, and those came from varying private entities and small developers. And we worked on the pre-application and all the related financials for the Catalyst Grant for March, which was submitted to NBRC. All of this, of note, was done working on behalf of the city of Berry as an applicant, obviously who was playing a pivotal role in exploring all state and federal grant options for public ownership for this property. For commercial updates, assistance with business planning, construction, and sourcing for a classic diner in Berry City, assistance with search and business planning for a clothing store in Berry City, assistance in scouting with business planning for a restaurant, a breakfast restaurant, also in the town or the city, continued business and financial planning for Warren's Kitchen, also to be located in the city, continued outreach to place large-scale manufacturers at the Wilson Industrial Park, continued work with McCauley Meats to help them find a long-term manufacturing tenant, general ongoing business assistance and support to facilitate Berry Area businesses and new business recruitment, and continued biweekly work with Wyten Burke and the City of Berry Downtown Coalition Team on varying Tiff District business needs, redesign, general project growth for the city within the Tiff District. Next slide, please. This is a recap of the work done in March, again, breaking it out by the Prospect Heights work and commercial. The pre-application, the financials for the Catalyst Grant were submitted on March 22 to NBRC. We began preparations for Senator Sanders' congressionally-directed spending application, and continued with our global discussions with the Housing Task Force to help address the housing crisis. Commercial updates, construction began in March for the classic diner to be located in the old Brazilian restaurant. The owner's loan was approved on 3/25, and they, at that point in time, targeted a June opening. The new clothing store, I mentioned before in the last slide, came to fruition. The name of the clothing store is Slowpoke. They'll be located at 124 North Main Street, Suite 2. The lease was executed that month, and the targeted opening for that is midsummer. Continued scouting and financial planning. the targeted opening for that is mid-summer. Continued scouting and financial planning with Warren's Kitchen for a location in the city, continued work with placing large-scale manufacturers at the WIP, continued work with McCauley Meats, and ongoing work, monthly ongoing work with assistance and support and revitalization for existing businesses and new business recruitment, and the ongoing bi-weekly work that we do with Wyten Burke and the Downtown Coalition Team. Next slide, please. Brings us to April, year-to-date. Really, this slide brings us actually through mid-May. The NBRC Catalyst pre-application and actual application grant was submitted in addition to the CDS, the congressionally-directed spending application with Senator Sanders. Both requests were made for $6 million with no conflict with either, with the City of Berry formally being called out as the applicant on both of those. Berry Area Development will continue to provide project management support through the proposed and assumed due diligence period to bring the project to fruition, and continued work and discussion with our Housing Task Force. April commercial updates, Tasty Bites Diner is the name of the diner. Just spoke to Lisa Lawrence Today, Lisa St. Lawrence Today, and she is targeting June 15th as an opening date, which is pretty exciting. She's waiting on a few things contract-wise. The clothing store is now targeting July or August, Slowpoke Exchange. Warren's Kitchen is honing in on the Old Soups and Greens, and so we've been working with Palmero on terms for that. We provided some assistance in April to the kind folks with the Berry Social Club, whom you heard from earlier. They are looking to purchase or lease space here in the city. We've also began work with Amy's Armoire, who is scouting to make a purchase here in the downtown and move location. Of note is also the completion of the 8,000-square-foot Frito-Lay Warehouse up at the Wilson Industrial Park, which was completed earlier in April. And just of note, again, the continued, ongoing weekly work with the Tiff Group and the Berry Downtown Coalition. Next slide, please. This is an update and overview of our first annual Economic Development Summit, which was held on Friday, May 3rd at the Vermont Granite Museum. It was a Power Pack Day, which brought together local businesses, entrepreneurs, and economic development experts for a full day of information, workshops, exhibitors, and speakers. We had 15 exhibitors, eight workshop providers, three speakers, and over 75 attendees. We're really excited about the first year and hoping to grow that exposure year, year-over-year. Next slide, please. I'm gonna go into a review of our KPIs on social media. Next slide. So, this slide basically breaks out the past 90 days. On Facebook, our account has reached over 28,000 individuals, gained over 65 new followers, and recorded over 10,000, close to 11,000 engagements. And that's what this breakout shows you, as we continue to push exposure of the Berry area, both for the city and the town, through social media. The next slide, please, is an overview of highlights. So, the highlights on this slide show, again, the past 90 days. Leading the list is the announcement of our annual Economic Development Summit, which reached over 1,500 people. And then, you know, you can go down the list and see the other posts and how they were, what the reach looked like, what the reactions were. Next slide, please. Wanted to give an update on our conversion. So, as you all know, Berry Area Development has been a 503(b) since its inception for many, many years. The process to convert to a 501(c)(3) is now complete with our attorneys, with all required organizational documentation having been filed with the Internal Revenue Service. So, that is now pending. Our attorneys have advised, we expect to receive a response sometime between the next six weeks to six months. They think, hopefully, it'll be more on the six-week side of things, but the IRS is pretty busy, so. And then, of note, I wanted to mention that as we're growing and working hard to support the city and the town, we've decided the necessary recruitment of a full-time marketing administration manager to assist with our growth and our execution of our three-to-five-year strategic plan. This person will assist with administrative and financial tasks, database management, budgets for projects, data and metrics, all marketing-related duties, including the creation and implementation of overall marketing strategy, and serve as a representative for Berry area to the community. Also, very exciting, we recruited a summer intern from Norwich University, Yasmin Saki, who began with us on May 9th. She's jumped right in and has been helping me with building out our commercial database and metrics tracking, which is long overdue, and we're very excited about that. And that is the end of my presentation, so I'm happy to take any questions from any of you.
Questions, Counselor Stockwell? Well, go down the list. It's all good.
I think I really liked being part of the strategic planning session. I thought that was, I thought you were coming up with some great goals. It seems really good. And I think stimulating economic growth, of course, is terrific for Berry City. But I was wondering if we can look at some different data, if you can develop some different data. So, for instance, if I say, you know, this is how often counsel met, and this is how much time we spend here, it wouldn't really tell you anything about what we're doing in council. So, I think it's the same, like saying that you had this many posts or this many followers, it doesn't tell you if there's actual growth. So, we have a baseline of here's where economic growth, here's where the economic growth is in the city, here's our baseline, maybe by sector, retail, services, which I know the data's out there. I think it's a little outdated. So, you could have this graph of where we are in terms of economic growth and activity, and then say, and here's where we're headed towards. Is that possible?
Absolutely. That's one of the reasons why we're recruiting a full-time marketing administrative manager to assist with that. And Yasmin, who just began with us a couple of weeks ago, has already jumped into that. So, it's my expectation that certainly by my next presentation, if not before, that we can start to show those kinds of graphs that you're talking about. You know, in my presentation, I provided a full breakout of our work month over month, which shows the recruitment efforts, which shows the work on all of our housing initiatives. But certainly, I can completely visualize what you're talking about in terms of a graph, and I think that's a wonderful way to also look at the same data that we're providing.
And do you know information about foot traffic in the city? Like, if someone, everyone I've talked to said, let's get a full, let's do a grocery store in the north end. Great idea. But do you know about foot traffic?
Yeah, we've done some work with DOT before on that kind of stuff, and I think they have very relevant current data, which I think would be useful for us to begin looking at, you know, especially with larger things like grocery stores or some of the manufacturing facilities that we're looking at up at the Wilson Industrial Park.
Thanks.
Ma'am.
So, I have a follow-up to Sam's question. So, in a more thorough thinking about foot traffic, but is there some kind of market analysis, so when you're trying to attract a business manufacturing company to the area, what kind of information are you giving to a new business, whether it be the Berry Social Club, or whether it be a new clothing store, or a restaurant? Are you able to provide the data that says, we have this many people who are remote workers, or we have this many people who are coming in and out of the downtown every single day and spending money, or we have this many people who, I'm not sure, are only, are living and working in Berry City? I don't know. I'm making things up.
Sure. Yeah, well, some of this information is on our website. In fact, our website is quite robust with that information. So, certainly, I appreciate what you're asking. And as we continue to develop out our metrics, I think these are great points we can add to. It really depends, though, to answer your question, on who's asking and what the business is. You know, the other day, I sat down with a physical therapist. She's interested in opening up a shop. She, you know, she wants to be here in the city, small, you know, sort of thing. You know, she has very specific questions. Her questions were more around, you know, how can I, you know, how can I find financing, what sorts of loans are available? You know, when you're talking about a larger business, it's a completely different, you know, ball of wax, as they say. So, it really depends. And our conversations, mine, my boards, are really tailored to the individual or the business that's asking. But again, I mean, I would point you immediately to our website, which is filled with lots of information for businesses coming to the area and curious about Berry and what Berry's about, whether they're coming from afar or somewhere within Vermont.
So, as a follow-up to that question, and sort of to pay you back on what Sam was saying, if you were to, it sounds like you're working on providing more data, and I would love to see more data. I'm curious, you just mentioned that you met with a physical therapist. You know, how many people are you meeting with? How many people are interested in moving here? How many people are interested or in the process of thinking about it, are starting to plan, are applying for loans, are working on a business, whatever it might be, and being able to understand how many people are in the pipeline so that we can get a better sense of that return on the investment that we are making in the BADC?
Certainly. We have a full project list, which we discuss at every monthly board meeting, which is public. And I just keep going back to this metrics database that I'm really excited that we just started to build, and certainly happy to provide that in graphs and charts going forward.
It would be really helpful. And if I may ask one last question, on your KPIs for social media, is there any way to tell where the people that are engaging with it or your followers, where they're from? Because I'm curious, are they all here from Berry, or are they from further afield?
Well, you can drill down and look at a person's particular social media by clicking through, but otherwise, no. If we're just pulling from our data on the backend of the business site, you can't necessarily see. You can see, generally speaking, Vermont or other areas, but you can't see specifically if someone's from Pittsburgh, or, you know, from Websterville. You wouldn't necessarily be able to pinpoint that unless you go down to that person's particular page.
Okay. I'm just curious if the people, if we're sort of preaching to the choir, if it will, because we all love Berry and we're here. And so, I'm wondering if the people who are engaging love Berry as much as we do because we already live here, or if it's people who are saying, hey, wait, this looks like a really cool place to move and open a business.
Yeah, I think it's both.
Okay.
I mean, just from the drill-down that I've done. But again, the backend is what it is in terms of what it gives you for, for metrics when you pull the reports.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a website.
Thank you. Great news on the 501(c)(3). I know that was a big project, so that's lovely. What I'll call the, like, dropdown boxes that you did, the April, March, January, February, those are, if I'm not mistaken, it's the first time we've, it's been presented to us in this way.
That's correct.
And I find it very, it's not the prettiest thing, but I find it very helpful with the
We can certainly make these metrics prettier, but this is the first
Yeah.
offering for you, yes.
I like this very much. So, thank you for that. My actual questions are, you know, understanding, not setting expectations too high. What is the rough timeline for trying to get some of the Prospect Heights units online? Are we talking two years out, four, eight?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, if everything goes according to plan, which
Never does, but
never does, but let's assume it's going to. We will hear from Northern Borders on June 28th, whether we are granted and what amount. I spoke with Senator Sanders' office last week several times, and they're very interested in the project. They are a much longer process, as you may know. And they weren't able to say, you're gonna hear from us this time, or that time, or the other time. I expect sometime over the summer or early fall, maybe. But going back to Northern Borders, should we be granted and then match the difference, the first year will truly be, as you all know, that of due diligence, where we'll be looking at what permits are necessary, dusting off the engineering drawing, bringing them current, and spending that first year doing that incredibly important work before any ground could be broken. Assuming that goes according to plan, the soonest that we would be breaking ground would be the spring of 2025.
Great. Thank you. The tough question is, recruiting of the marketing admin manager. I don't want the city council to be in a place that I felt we were at in previous budget cycles, where BADC staffs up, and then we have a city council meeting where we hear that we need a large budget increase, or BADC is going to have to reduce staffing. So, in your strategic planning conversations and bringing on this marketing admin manager, have you prepared for the financial implications of that in seeking other money besides city-and-town funds?
Absolutely. I mean, I think I'll answer this twofold. We'd like to show you what Berry Area Development can actually do for the city and town. We think that we're starting to really do that now. I'm very confident that we are with the Prospect Heights Project and with new businesses that we're bringing to town. So, you know, when we're sitting here in whatever, December, January, talking about next year's budget, and I'm making my proposal to you, I'd like to be demonstrating to you the good work, as I am now that we actually provide with taxpayer dollars. So, hopefully, that answers the first portion. Second portion is, we've decided to convert to a 501(c)(3) so that we have more options available to us for grants, for monies, to do the good work that we do for the city and for the town, so that we're not constantly, you know, feeling like we need to rely upon one source or another, or have, I guess, for lack of a better word, this dependency, right? I think it's good to have a good portfolio of options when you talk about money and your operating costs.
Fully agree. And, you know, we'll go through the budget later, but this year, this past year's budget was really hard. The state budget this year is really hard, and there's no pot of gold at the end of next year's legislative session or next year's council budget, so.
But our job is to show you the good work that we're doing, and we are, and we continue to do that. And, you know, you know, our enhancement of the visuals, I think, will only help that. We encourage you to come to our board meetings monthly. They're public. We encourage you to be involved. We encourage the public to get involved. We want your input.
Yes, ma'am.
First, I'm glad Counselor Stockwell found the strategic planning conversations useful. Could you proactively share the final strategic plan with council so that we could review it? Would that be possible?
Absolutely. We are preparing to deliver it to the board, our board, in the June timeframe, in the June, for the June 12th board meeting, at which point in time we'll be sharing that with council and with everybody else as well. So, my overview of it was high-level, but this will be a full-fledged, you know, strategic plan.
Well, I would echo the other counselors. I look forward to seeing what metrics you're using to measure progress on that strategic plan. And just a small side question, speaking of metrics, did you do any surveying of the attendees at your Economic Development Summit?
We did. Yeah.
Did you find it was generally well-received?
It was very well-received. We're starting to get feedback. People are, you know, suggesting things for this or that or next year. We hope to grow the number of exhibitors. We love having it at the Granite Museum. There's lots of space there. Certainly grow the number of workshops, maybe even expand the day and the hours of the day as well.
Did you, so just to echo Counselor Spalding's question, did you find people came from Berry, from central Vermont, from further?
There were people from all over Vermont, people that I knew from past lives of mine and other places that I've worked that were there, from Chittenden County. There were folks from down in Bennington County that came up. And then, I would say, maybe 75% of the people were from this immediate area. But to answer your question, there were people from all over Vermont.
Thank you.
Any other questions, folks?
Yes, sure. Do you find that there's anything that we could do as council to help provide more support for the mission for BADC?
Certainly. Again, I welcome all of you to come to our monthly meetings. I think your input, your thoughts, your feedback, your suggestions are very welcome, and we would, we would love to have your participation as much as you're able. I know you're all very busy, if that answers your question. And your suggestions around, you know, presentation or any of this is also very welcome.
Just appreciate, you know, being the council liaison over the last two years with BADC, and just being able to speak with you guys, and you guys be able to take that information and kind of mold that into what you guys are doing. So, appreciate you guys being welcome and receptive to that.
Any other questions?
May, thank you. You're doing some great work. I mean, I've enjoyed working with you on the Prospect Heights Project. I've got a good feeling about that grant, and that project is going to be transformative. We heard a lot of people talk and talk and talk about growing the grant list, fully built out. That is a $30 million, $32 million increase in the grant list. That alone would be transformative and provide affordable housing, senior housing, workforce housing. So, I'm really excited about that, and I've got a good feeling. I heard a couple of questions about pedestrian traffic. Is there even such a, there's not even such a thing. I mean, I know, we count vehicular traffic.
Well, vehicular traffic, the DOT has information.
We can tell people, demographics, we can tell people how many people live within a certain area. Is there anything that anyone has that would tell you? I think the question was, how many people walk in the downtown? I don't think we actually, we count cars, or we don't. Vtrans counts cars. We can tell you how many people live within a certain area. We can tell you their incomes. We can tell you, we can tell you a lot. tell you, we can tell you a lot about the people who live within a certain area, but I don't think we actually, I don't think anyone actually collects, like, foot traffic data, like how many people walk up and down Main Street in a day, do they?
I don't know. I made a mental note when Sonia commented on that to, to look into that. I, I'm not aware of foot traffic tracking.
Yeah.
But it's possible. Or maybe it's something that should happen. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, I, I don't think there is, I mean, not in Vermont. There, there is in other areas where they actually do have cameras that count pedestrian, physical traffic, but I'm not aware that actually exists in Vermont. And the first economic summit, absolutely enjoyed it. What I enjoyed most about it was the number of young entrepreneurs who were there to get information and network with older and more experienced people. Yes, ma'am, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, no, just along those same lines. We were really interested in attending. We were really interested in attending. But as someone who's starting a new business, we both have day jobs. It would have been really fabulous to have a weekend option to attend.
Thank you for that feedback. And we waited, early on, we were trying to decide weekday, weekend, and not conflict with other events, similar events. And we landed on that day because it seemed like the least of a conflict, but that's good feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
And, you know, lastly, we've heard a lot of questions about, are we reaching people outside of central Vermont? And I guess what I'd say is, I don't know that we have to. You know, currently, we have a very well-known business wholesaler in Berry who's opening a retail location on Main Street. We've seen, you know, recently on South Main Street, was just talking to a local investor who just bought a building there and is expanding his business there. So what I appreciate about the work you're doing and how networked you are, is that you're encouraging the businesses we have to expand. You're encouraging them to reach a little further, and I think you're doing a great job. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, folks? Thanks, May, and for the folks on the board who attended, thanks for, thanks for coming by.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we're at, well, that was a little bit of good news. Unfortunately, we've got to
Yeah.
talk a little bit. I asked the manager to prepare, and Dawn, to prepare a budget update so that we could, you know, obviously, we've got to understand where we are. And then in the next few weeks, we'll be talking about where we're going. It's all yours, Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. So, council, you received a PowerPoint from me earlier today, and it's on your desks, and it's up here on the screens. Just, we use these slides a lot, but just to, to home back to the structural challenges of our budget, is that most of it is fixed. That big blue pie there is wages and benefits, about two-thirds of the budget, and that's fixed by contracts primarily. And then the, the orange slice there is what we would call sort of fixed costs. Those are things that we have little to no control over, things like debt service, insurance, heating, fuel, you know, the, the costs are the costs. You know, we have to put fuel in cruise, in police cruisers, fire trucks, and we, we pay what it is. And then there's that smaller chunk, which is discretionary spending. So you can see there that over, over three-quarters of the budget easily is, is fixed. On the other hand, on the revenue side, we're also super dependent on property taxes, and that's 72% of our income revenues is property taxes and pilot payments. The second largest chunk is city-generated revenue. That's 20%. So those are things like fees, revenues from rentals at the civic center. And then the smallest chunk is 8% of federal and state assistance, and that's 8%. And I just put this chart on the other side to show you that, that's unusually high. This is the FY '25 numbers, the budget that was just approved by the voters. That's, 8% is unusually high this year, and that's because of the $1 million that the legislature provided to us for flood recovery. So otherwise, it hovers usually around 1% of our revenues. So to get into sort of the, where we are in FY '24, into the nitty-gritty, you know, the floods, amongst the, amongst the many impacts of the flood was that it impacted our reserves. So prior to the flood, the FY '23 ending unassigned fund balance was very healthy, $661,000 and change. This was primarily driven by vacancies that were persistent, and we couldn't fill. And really, beyond it, also really careful financial stewardship from, from Dawn. But it was, it was a healthy fund balance that allowed us to do many, many good things for the city. By charter, we're able to retain a portion of it, and then other portions above it were approved by council to use on one-time, non-recurring expenses. So for example, fire gear, which was a, it's a 10-year purchase, and so we used some excess fund balance to purchase that. And then we made transfers to the capital fund to support things like last year's expanded paving program. And there's the, just for reference, the section of the charter that governs the, the fund balance use. So here's where we are in FY '24 on the revenues and expenses. So that first line shows you our revenues. Our budgeted amount was 13, 13.7 million and change. As of May 15th, our revenues are low. They're 13.9, 13.4 million, roughly so a couple hundred thousand dollars under the total amount. FY '24 expenses, also our budget's balanced, so they were 13.7 million. And those expenses as of May 15th were 11 million and, just about 11 and a half million. So on a year-to-date basis, the numbers look good. That's a $1.9 million difference there between revenues of expenses. So that's good, but that's, I'll show you why that's also bad in the next couple of slides. So here, we're trying to break out for you really the, the direct flood impact so far. We've had $1.9 million of direct flood expenses. We've only received $135,000 and change in FEMA reimbursements, and just about $111,000 in insurance reimbursement. So netting that out, we're still, due to the flood, 1.6 million and change in the red of money, expenses gone out.
Clarifying question. That's just expenses, right? That's not counting any of the tax abatements, or is that included?
That's just expenses.
That's what I thought.
Correct.
Yep.
And, and have we gotten most of the reimbursements, or we're still hopeful?
We're still hopeful.
We're hopeful, yeah. That's, that's what we
How hopeful are we?
I think quite. I think we're, we're moving through. The money is slow. I mean, Dawn's managing this day-to-day, and part of it is on us to submit, part of it is on FEMA to, to reimburse. Our, one of our biggest projects, we were just talking about it today in a FEMA meeting, was our debris collection, which is nearly a half a million dollars, right around $500,000 right there. And so that hasn't been submitted yet, right? So that's, that's an expense that's reflected in that number. It's not, it couldn't even be a reimbursement yet because we haven't submitted yet, but all of that takes time. It takes Dawn's time to prepare the projects. It takes FEMA's time to review them, and then eventually FEMA time to just pay them out. What we receive reimbursement for is primarily the emergency, these are the emergency actions we took on Portland and Oswald, I believe, is the biggest chunk of this, if not all of it.
We have also, which is not reflected in these numbers because it hits our capital fund, but we also received payment for our two loaders that we lost.
Yes.
Oh.
Right.
That's outside of the general fund.
Yeah.
So of the 1.9, Dawn, what percentage is reimbursable? Because as we look at these numbers, we're really talking about timing differences, not necessarily deficits. So is the 1.9, when I look at insurance proceeds or FEMA, whether it's state, federal reimbursement, what percentage of that 1.9 is reimbursable?
Right now, we're still at 75%.
Oh, 75. So that 1.9, if we were to, you know, flash forward, when everybody, for lack of a better word, settles up, the flood expenses, net of insurance and reimbursement, are going to be about half a million, give or take. And then, of course, we've got to add, as you mentioned, the, the abatements.
And you're talking about the 1.9 for flood expenses?
Yes.
Not the 1.9. The other
Correct. There's another 1.9.
There's two 1.9s.
There's going to be two 1.9s and two 1.6s, so.
Yeah, because it's mostly timing, not
Yeah.
It's been relatively quiet. Like, so I haven't heard an update in a while, but I did hear at one point that we were, they were expecting 90% reimbursable. I just haven't heard when that's going to come out yet.
Yeah, I haven't
And some of them will be 100, like, I think the Oswald and Portland will be 100 eventually because they were
We've gotten only 75% now. In our debris cleanup, there's a set amount of dates, like, July through August 7th, I think. That will be 100% covered.
Gotcha.
And the remaining is 75%.
Yeah. So here's, here's where we get to the, the projections for the end of FY '24. And I, the word projections is doing a lot of work in that slide. Like, this is really rough. This is the best we can do with the data we have at the moment and making some assumptions. So starting with the, the, the 1.9 that was good, right? So that's the, the year-to-date number, 1.9. The remaining expenditures that we estimate, so this include, this is basically Dawn's projected out, our payroll AP for the rest of the year. And that's, so that 2.5 million takes, is an estimate of that. This is an estimated revenue to be collected, 500,000. That could be, that's the ballpark. That's just an estimate at this point as well. And then additional FEMA reimbursements that are in the queue, that are for projects that are submitted. So when you sum all of that up, we're looking at a total projected impact of 1.6 million dollars, which, you know, if you look, you know, the, the prior slide said our flood impact was 1.68. Our total projected impact is 1.65. Basically, what this tells you, if the flood hadn't happened, we'd be in really good shape. Like, we, we created a really good budget for '24. We've been really accurate in '24. We've been really careful in it. And the, the gap, the impact that we're facing is almost exactly the attributable to the, to the flood numbers.
So if we book all of the reimbursables, if we look at this on an accrual basis, let's talk our language. If we look at this on the accrual basis, I'm still calculating about a $350,000 real deficit, not, that's just the way it's going to be.
Yeah, I won't show up in financials that way.
No. But it will show up that way because, of course, we've got this hybrid government method of accounting that
Right.
Yeah.
Sixty days after the fiscal year-end, we'll book it in on the balance sheet.
Right.
But you can't write a nice, that's rather
So you'd calculate a give or take. I know it's tough, but I'm calculating around 350 to 400,000 when I, when I look at, what are we going to get for reimbursement? You know, if these numbers prove accurate, and I have no reason to think they won't, once we're eventually reimbursed, the real, for lack of a better word, financial effect or deficit is 300,000 to 400,000 is what I'm, you know, and I'm just looking at, I'm just taking that 1.6, taking the 1.9 at 75%, factoring in the FEMA reimbursements and insurance reimbursements to date, and then measuring that effect against the total projected impact of 1.6, leaves me with 300,000 to 400,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. It helps.
So for the FY '24 big picture, just putting all these numbers together that, that we've shown you, we started at a fund balance of 661. That's where, that's our ending FY ' '23 position. Our projected FY '24 final position was negative 1.65. So the final position for FY '24 is negative 988,000, so ballpark a million. So when we start thinking about the FY '26 budget, you know, we'd be looking at this final position plus the 1 million we'd have to make up from the state if no additional revenues are received from the state next year to get to zero.
Yep. We can have that depressing conversation in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
All right. Can you back up for one more slide, Nicholas? To the mayor's math, are you saying that your opinion, that 988 is going to be closer to 354?
No, no. The, the majority, if you, if you take the big number, the $2 million in flood expenses.
Yeah, reimburse that.
75% of that is reimbursable. So I'll just round it, makes the math easier. 1.5 million the city is going to get. However, we've already gotten these two numbers here, the 135 and the 111. Let's just call that 300 again, make the math easy. So we are expecting 1.2 million in additional reimbursement that is not reflected in that number. So we're going to, so there's two things happening here. You know, it's getting to the, to the quote-unquote "real" effect and managing the cash flow. Managing the cash flow is going to be a challenge. We, we have borrowing capacity. We're okay. But if you look at our original 661 fund balance, look at that 988, which is absolutely an accurate number, but make that 1.2 million adjustment for FEMA reimbursement, then we actually end up with 300,000. That's where I was, like, 300 to 400. You end up with a $300,000 final position, but you're never going to see that number because of all the timing differences.
Right, right, right. Okay, yeah, no.
You'll get there probably two years from now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, so it sort of helps my head to understand that we're talking about a cash management issue, not a pure, yes, we have an operating deficit, but we haven't. It's hard to even explain it if you can't see the numbers in your head as an accountant. We have 300,000 left over. If we could wave a magic wand and FEMA would, boom, give us every dollar they owe us.
Direct deposit every Friday.
But, but no, but there's timing. So, you know, the good news is, it's not, you know, we're not going to be broke. The, it, the bad news is, we've virtually wiped out our, you know, we got to factor in interest, so we're going to, we've wiped out our fund balance. That 600,000 is gone, and that's where we're going to, you know, and we're starting our next budget cycle, as the manager and Dawn have pointed out, you know, 2 million in the hole just to maintain services. This has been very helpful, and I asked you to do it on short notice, so thank you very much. Any questions?
There's one more slide. Just one final piece, just the, just ARPA funding, because this will be coming for decision by the council, big decisions by the council in the, the rest of the year. So the city's ARPA award was 2.5 million. The council has approved several expenditures or allocations under that. So here you can see is the, our, our summary of the revenue, some interest that we've earned on it, the expenditures. The last couple of big-ticket items have been Downstreet Housing Project, 250,000 for the Ward 5 School Project. Half of the Opera House Lighting Project was funded out of ARPA. The Green Mountain Pipeline Sewer Lining Project on North Main Street was funded out of ARPA. And then there was a, an allocation of a trust fund, which is still pending, coming back to the council in final disposition, but that was 250,000. So that, that, there's about a 1.6 million dollar of ARPA that hasn't been designated one way or the other. I copied in for you the, the rules about obligations. We have to obligate all this funding by December 31, 2024. And so it's a pretty strict definition of obligation, so we're going to look to start a engagement process with the council about how we use the, the balance of that 1.6 million dollars, obligate it by December 31.
Is that in the final rule, Dawn? Is that where I'd find that definition? The Treasury issued the final rule. I got through the first introductory paragraph and said, nope. Yes, ma'am.
Just for transparency, what is the housing trust fund, and who are the trustees of that fund?
Sure. So in March, I believe it was, the council made a, decided to explore the creation of a, a trust fund, a revolving loan fund. Both terms were used interchangeably. They charged the Housing Task Force, which is run by that person sitting to your left. And TESS has been working with the Task Force and with Downstreet on the parameters for, you know, trust fund or revolving loan fund. And TESS is expecting, we talked about this June 4th, June 18th, I forget. June 18th, TESS is coming back to council to present the parameters. The council charged TESS to work with, or the, not TESS directly, but the Housing Task Force. And TESS has been engaging with Downstreet, with the Housing Task Force, and the council directed her to come back and propose a structure for it.
Now, who's the trustee? Now, who's the trustee?
Sounds like it might be Downstreet, but it'll, it'll be dependent on whatever the council approves.
Downstreet has a revolving housing fund, so we could add money to it and expand its capability to serve Berry City residents.
Okay.
So it's being developed.
But, uh, so if Downstreet got two hundred fifty thousand and Downstreet is the trustee of the trust, there's five hundred thousand in that.
No, the, the Downstreet Housing line is for a specific project. It's to, uh, it was.
Granite City Apartments.
Yeah, Granite City Apartments, nine units.
Former North Bear, nor, former Ward Five, excuse me, school.
Yeah.
Which is now Granite City Apartments. That two hundred and fifty thousand was an outright grant from the city council. And, you know, technically, the balance today is one million eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, because while we're, we're interested in what a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar revolving loan fund might look like, council hasn't yet committed the funds.
Thank you.
Of course.
I was just gonna.
Yeah, of course.
Basically, the council said the money is there for a housing trust fund if we can come up with a good structure. Downstreet was at that meeting, and they say, hey, we've done this with other communities. We might be helpful. So we asked Tess. Uh, but the Housing Task Force say, okay, look at what, some structures that might work. Talk to Downstreet, see what they do, and then come back to us with a proposal for a structure. And so that's what's gonna happen on the eighteenth, is Tess and Co. will come back with that proposal for a structure.
And, uh, Amy Galford has a question.
Oh, of cour, uh, I'm sorry. Amy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I'm just curious that, um, the loans can count for, um, obligations. So even if the money is gonna come back to city council in some form, that, um, they're willing to count that as an obligated. I thought it had to be like grants rather than a loan.
Yeah. No, we've, we've gotten guidance, Amy, that the revolving loan funds are, uh, an allowable use of the ARPA funding and counted, uh, as an obligation.
Thanks, Amy. Council, any other questions? I mean, it, it, it looks bad. It's really not as bad. As of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, it's, it's really not that bad. It's, it, you know, it's bad. We, we burned up most of our fund balance, but we're not, um, deficit spending, so to speak. Um, but it gets worse. So we'll talk, like I said, in the next couple of weeks, we'll talk about, um, our twenty twenty-six fiscal year-end because that's where it's really going to get challenging. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Bernadette Rose, Bern Rose. Um, how do the abatements and our, um, income and the, the money that we lost, uh, from the flood, how does that, uh, play into what we're looking at?
That'll really impact the, um, the twenty-five revenues is where we'll see most of that hit.
Well, it's, it's significant, Bern. It's a great question.
Sounds like.
So, to date through March, um, most of us sit, well, all of us now, sit on the Board of Abatement through March because we, we really didn't go much past March. For that quarter, I believe the abated amount and part of it was subject to state reimbursement. It was a tick over a hundred thousand dollars. And the state reimburses some, so I think Donna ended up being around seventy-five cost to the municipality. But we've got another quarter. So when we abated property taxes this round, we were only abating through March because we didn't know if folks were gonna fix up their house, tear their house. You know, we didn't know what they were going to do.
They don't know what they're doing.
So we didn't, you're exactly right. So we only, but I absolutely anticipate we're gonna have another round that will affect the June thirtieth quarter. And I did look at those numbers briefly, and I would expect, because now we're not getting the state reimbursement. So I think those numbers are gonna be, they're gonna tick up a little bit from seventy-five to around a hundred. So Dawn's done some, Dawn and Nicholas have done some really good work here, but there could be another hundred thousand or so, and we could be soft in revenue, which is why I keep, you know, giving these ranges of, you know, three to five hundred thousand, because we just don't know until folks make the request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. Is there any way that we might be able to interchange some of the ARPA funds for some of things like paving project or some projects like that to kind of offset the cost?
Um, I think paving, paving's, and paving's eligible, isn't it?
This is not reoccurring expenses, correct?
They're, I'm not gonna say yes or no on paving, 'cause I'm not honest. I'm not sure of that, but I know, like, water and sewer infrastructure is definite approval. The thing I would say about that is because of the local option stacks, our capital fund is pretty good. It's pretty decent. Um, it's more the general fund that.
So I guess my question then becomes, is there anything that we can offset from the general fund with ARPA funds, so that way we're not facing such a gap? Or make our financial outlook look a bit better with this money that we need to have obligated?
You could, but then you're creating.
Bigger hole. Yeah. So, so basically, yeah, so basically, we have a million-dollar hole in twenty-four. In twenty-five, we'll have another million on top of that because the state money presume, goes away, right? The, the legislature hasn't given us anything beyond twenty-five. Any ARPA money we add to operational funding just basically digs a bigger hole that then we have to make up with a more significant tax increase or more severe cuts in services, um, one way or the other. So I, I, I think it's, um, it's tough to use non-recurring expenses for operational, uh, needs. Uh, so, non-recurring revenues, by definition, they go away. You have to, you have to either make up the revenue somehow or you have to cut the expense. Um, so I think it's tempting, but I, I, I think it's, it only creates a bigger hole down the road and a more painful decision down the road.
And an unavoidable hole. You know, for example, if we took the entire one point eight million of ARPA and just plugged the next bu, budget cycle.
We're good.
You know, taxes would go up a couple of percent and we'd be fine. But then we just kick the can down the ro, you know, we'd kick the can down the road to the next year, when now the ARPA, you know, this year, state money saved us, next year, ARPA money saves us. Well, what's gonna save you the year after that? Nothing. So, yes, ma'am?
So would it, it seems like it would make the most sense to use it on one-time funds or one-time expenses that will generate more revenue, whatever that is.
Yeah. I mean.
Well, you got it.
You know, things like the, the turf are a great example of that, right? So the turf was not ARPA. The turf was, um, we use Semperban, uh, Keith Fund?
Yes.
Keith Fund. So that's a, you know, that's a, um, it's, it's a fund trust. It's not a, uh, it's a, it's a one-time expense, but that's gonna continue to generate revenue. Um, and it has a, a built-in function to, um, replenish for maintenance and equipment, right? So that's, that was a good example of something that, um, makes a part-time facility full-time use and will create money. Yeah.
Danielle, did you have a question online?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. I have two questions. So one is a question just wondering about, um, in terms of getting future funding. So from today on, um, to help us to deal with some of the issues that we're having with flooding in the future, um, and then issues that are based on the damage that we have. Do we have, like, the staff support in order to be able to apply for grant funding moving forward? Like, I know that, I don't know how many people are doing it. If it's just Janet, like, does she have the support she needs and able to apply for all the opportunities that might show up to get us more funding, to help us meet the budget needs? And then my second question is, um, are we thinking about sort of monetizing the rec department and hiring somebody who could maybe, um, start some programs in the city and help to get us more funding by hosting recreation opportunities that can, that can bring in funding like others, other cities and towns in the state like Waterbury, for example? Thanks.
So, um, thanks Danielle for the question. So, um, no, Janet, it's, Janet does not have enough support to do it. And, uh, basically, the grants fall to primarily a combination of Janet, myself, Dawn gets involved on the financial side, Brian Baker on sort of the hazard mitigation fund. So it's basically a, a patchwork, um, of, of people. And that's, that's a challenge. I mean, the other part that's a challenge is that most, most all grants have a local match, as you know. And so that also becomes a, where do we find the money situation, right? Um, so it's a, it's a real, um, it's, it's a real concern. Um, and, uh, to hire the person to do that is, again, just building onto that deficit. Um, uh, I know that, you know, they, they could probably generate revenues, but it's still, you still have to start somewhere, um, and pay for the position somehow.
And, and we actually have an open position now, Danielle, that we wish we could, we could fill. So it's not that the city isn't willing to make the investment. We literally, um, haven't been able to fill that position for going on three.
Three years.
Three years.
Three years, yeah.
Um, i- i- it's interesting that you bring that up. Um, I was having a conversation recently with Ed Stanek. Ed is a very smart, very talented man, and he retired at one point from state government. And, um, we started talking about whether he was bored or not. Uh, his daughter was just elected mayor of Burlington, so maybe he's not bored right now. But we were talking about whether he was bored. And so I mentioned to him, I said, well, what if you had the opportunity to come back to work for the city for ten or fifteen hours a week, um, you know, writing grants? So one of the things that I'm looking into is, uh, the number of pe, if you look around in Berry at the number of residents who have recently retired from a career in state government or business or wherever, there's a lot of people out. And even if we could get, I, I'm absolutely convinced that it's gonna be pretty difficult to get a forty-hour person. But there are three or four or five really high-level, uh, folks recently retired in Berry City who could maybe work five or ten or fifteen hours for the city and help us with some of these grants.
And to your recreation question, Danielle, um, you know, I think for the most part, recreation programs at the scale that we're running them, just, they cost money. They, um, they're, they're either, um, and that's okay. I mean, that's, that's, I think that's a decision that, you know, in the past, like, it's been worthwhile to pr, provide recreational opportunities for kids. Um, but I think even the pool is, the, the pool runs at a deficit, but that's still an important asset to provide. We just couldn't, I think, generate profits on camps or, you know, tournaments or whatever to, to pay for a, a full rec position probably. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's a good thing that, it's a good service the city provides. It's just not a moneymaker.
Yes, ma'am.
Do grant writers have to be paid by the city?
Um, I, I appreciate our volunteers more than you know. Um, but you see, well, we're gonna have a conversation in just a second about what happens when volunteers aside, you know, they don't wanna show up. So my thought would be, if you really want a job done, there are some fantastic volunteers. Um, but if we had a grant with a deadline on it and, um, you know, there are grants out there. There's a gr, there's an EPA grant that I would like to pursue jointly with the city of Montpelier. That would be a ten to twenty million dollar grant. You know, and that produce, turning that grant around by November is gonna be a really big lift. So my preference would be to have it be a paid position, to look at someone and say, you know, we're, we're that serious as opposed to, you know, volunteers who, well, you know, what can you expect? They're donating their services as opposed to being paid. But they certainly could if there was someone like yourself who is talented and you wanted to complete a grant for the city. Um, I don't think Nicholas or Dawn would say no.
Okay. Yeah, that was kind of my question, was whether or not something like that would make for like a good task force.
Mm-hmm.
If you will, to just have a pool of people who are experienced in grant or government writing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to where it, it isn't as big of a lift, just be like, hey, we have this. This is what we think the level of effort would be in order to execute it. Do, like, does anybody have the availability to support it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I totally understand what you're saying. And then the, the second part is for, to piggyback on Danielle's question. Um, you know, a lot of times when it's recreation for kids, there is a lot more that has to go into it, 'cause you have to do, like, age bracket. Sometimes it's, um, you know, uh, I, I don't know if I'm gonna use the word correctly, but sometimes it's like a gender breakout. So it, like, expounds. Um, do, could the city do more adult recreation to where those types of divisions don't exist, but to have like a volleyball league? Because I know most states where I've lived, I paid like forty bucks to be part of a volleyball league, and adults pretty much govern themselves. Um, you know, so those types of different programs as potential revenue opportunities for the, the city, and we can also stay up later.
So where, where the city can, you know, where we would make the revenue on something like that is by renting out the BOR, right? So we, we don't have a person who can, you know, collect registrations, get waivers, make teams, schedule tournaments, all that. What we would do is we would say, hey, here's a great facility that you can run your volleyball league in. Um, and we get a revenue, we get, we, we rent it out, you know, we pay someone to be there, but we net money. Um, so that's, that's where the city's opportunity is, not necessarily organizing it or running it. It's like saying, now, you know, the hours for the BOR are dictated by the activities at the BOR. So right now, the hours are, it's, there, there's lighter because it's beautiful outside and people like to recreate outside, right? So if there were a volleyball league or, uh, dodgeball league or whatever, what have you, soccer league, um, that was into later evening hours, we would have to pay someone probably overtime to be there, but we'd still break, you know, we'd still make money on it. Um, so, but that's where we would make the, that's where the city would see an income from the rental of the facility.
Locking in that nugget.
We also do offer, right now, currently, um, pickleball.
Yeah.
Road. And that's just, uh.
At the auditorium.
At the auditorium. Yep. We set up the stuff, um, when there's no shows and things like that, and it's a, you know, a donation base or whatever. 'Cause it's during, during work hours.
Right.
Yeah. And, and the rental fees, you know, I think, I'm in a couple of recreational leagues myself. Um, you know, the rental fee for the facility is a one-ten an hour. Um, so, you know, if you have on a volleyball team, what, you need at least ten people to play.
Oh, uh.
Like, a whole game.
Oh, sure.
Right? Like, five-a-side, is it? Six-a-side?
Six-a-side.
So that's less than ten bucks a person to play a game for an hour, right? So it's affordable. It's not, um, you know, I feel like there would be.
How do people know? How do people know that they can rent them out?
That they can rent out the turf?
Spread the word. Spread the word, people on the phone.
It's on Facebook.
It's on Facebook, it's on Instagram, it's on the fa, websites and the, the monthly Times Argus ad. Um, I mean, the thing is, it's nice outside now, so I think that's also what's driving it, but.
Don't we have pickleball courts at the pool?
We do, um, didn't have.
Okay. Rest my case.
If you'd like to start a league, let me know.
I'm already on it at the old Labor Hall. We're talking about a bocce league, the Barry Bocce League. Coming soon.
Any other questions, counsel? No? Dawn, thank you. Nicholas, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, we're at, uh, item eight D, which is assign council liaisons to committees rather than actually, my expectation tonight is that we wouldn't actually, I'd give you a chance to think about it, which committee, and then, uh, be prepared to actually make decisions. But Nicholas, you've got something to add in terms of committee vac, uh, committee vacancies?
Um, you, you know, um, not too much to what I said earlier. Um, it's, um, like I said, it was really low interest besides the, um, Buildings and Facilities Committee, which will have two applicants for one seat, not counting incumbents. Um, every other committee is gonna have at least, uh, one vacancy. Um, the Homelessness Task Force, the Parks and Rec Committee, and Transportation Public Works would be unable to, um, to meet on account of, um, lack of quorum. And the Homelessness Task Force isn't in your memo as that, but that with Joe Mueller's resignation, it is now unable to meet, uh, based on the, the returns from the applications. So, um, I know that the, you know, the, the Police Advisory Committee, um, is one of our higher-functioning, um, public bodies. They happen to have a council liaison, which I think is, Teddy serves on it. Um, and I think that perhaps a, a way to keep the committees on task, keep volunteers interested and engaged and connected to the work of the council, that it might be worthwhile to try to see if the council liaisons have an impact on, uh, retention, interest, and all that. So, um, I also sent you earlier today, which was a good, uh, good question from Counsel Deering, which I should've thought of, which is the schedule of when the committees meet. So, um, the people can sort of, if, if you're interested, um, you can see sort of what it might mean to, to your schedule.
Questions? Yes, ma'am. Oh, well, yep.
Uh, if we have thought about it and are willing to volunteer for committees tonight, could we move forward on some of them, but not all of them? Or would you?
Of course. I mean, if there's a committee that's near and dear to your heart, and you're prepared to make the commitment tonight, by all means.
I have, I have two, if I'm, if I may.
Yep, and they were?
Parks and Recreation and the Cow Pasture.
And, yes, can I rock, paper, scissors, use you for Parks and Rec?
We want to meet in person-
Me too.
On a Saturday morning, when the rest of us are not working.
I'd do anything.
Just throwing it out there.
Counsel's falling.
Two questions. Is the liaison, because I don't understand this, is the liaison a voting member, or just a liaison?
Not a voting member, yeah.
Okay. And I am interested in the Justice Equity Diversity Inclusion and Belonging Committee. I've applied, because I was a member of that committee. So how does that change the, one incumbent did not apply and no student applicants? If I, do I become a liaison and no longer become a-
Member.
Committee member?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Well, I would like to be on that committee if I may.
And there's nobody on Transportation currently?
There are two people on it who did not have terms up this year. That's Steve McKenzie and Art Bombardier. But they would, that's a five-member committee, so since the three members that are up for election this year did not apply, and no new members applied, then Art and Steve couldn't meet.
So we've got a little bit of, little bit of work to do as a council, advertising and encouraging some of our neighbors to at least fill the committees that, like the Transportation and Public Works, that can't even meet right now, because they don't have a quorum and can't even make a recommendation to the council. Yes, Counsel Stockwell?
I'd be happy to adopt the Transportation and Public Works Committee and, and look for new members.
I like the adopt terminology.
And that's the traffic.
That's right.
Anything else from counsel?
Well, as long as everybody's making the dive. And only one, one council member can be on one committee, correct?
Yes. Well, I mean, first of all, council members, I mean, only one can be the official liaison.
Okay.
You can attend all the committee meetings you want-
Okay.
As a member of the city council.
I'll do cemeteries.
Cemeteries.
Stating for the record, I'd like to continue on Police Advisory.
Yep. Well, that's where you belong.
Where you're about to.
And Amy Galford, you had a question?
Yeah. I was on a, a committee that doesn't exist anymore a few years ago, and there were a bunch of reasons. It was a small committee, and a couple people moved out of town, and just, it just kind of fell apart over time. So I've been trying to figure out whether I have the bandwidth to join a committee, but I don't want to join if I can't meet the time commitments. And also, for some of the committees, I might have a conflict of interest with my day job. So one thing that I remember that Mayor Herring did years ago, Lucas Herring did, was he had every committee writing, I don't, it was like a, kind of a scope. And I think there was probably some back and forth with the city council about what the scope of the committee was. Some of the committees have changed a bit the last few years, and I haven't kept up with all the mergers and what the scope of them are. So like, I'm not sure what's in the Transportation and Public Works Committee scope. The other problem with that is like, because it's not meeting, I can't look at recent meeting minutes to tell what the, what its scope is. And I don't know when it meets, so I can't sit in on a, on a meeting. So it's kind of like a chicken and egg problem. So, um, we also had to do not just a, like a scope description, but also, like, the spreadsheet, which was what were we going to work on in a given year, which I love that kind of stuff, because it's like, okay, concrete, what are you doing? You're not just brainstorming. You're actually like, these are a couple specific things that we're going to work on this year, and that's how we're going to do it. I don't know where all of that information went. I remember working on it for the tree committee, and the tree committee doesn't exist anymore. So just in terms of, I don't know how many people there are like me, who are kind of like, trying to figure out if we can even, like, what am I committing to in terms of our scope? What specifically is a given committee working on, as opposed to the things the city staff do? Like, there's a whole Public Works Department, so I'm not sure what the Public Works Committee does versus, you know, the Public Works Department, and that sort of thing. So I think just, you know, in addition to the meeting times, and trying to get those going again, even if they can't take action on a forum, at least having people show up and talk about that, and if there are any of those old documents to dig up about the scope of this. And, and some of that may have been when the committees were reorganized, to cover them, but just having that available on the website would have helped.
Understood. Nicholas?
Yeah, I, I think, Amy, for specifically the Transportation and Public Works Committee, I actually think you would be conflicted out of your day job, because that's, one of the intents of that one was to really focus on the wastewater and water operations on the, on the public works side. That committee was really a merger of the old TAC Committee, and the Path, Roots, and Trails Committee, and maybe another one. But it's, it's real focus was sort of that mobility, transit issues, and then adding the, sort of the public works, water, wastewater scope to it. So the other part is that, I, I agree with you, it's sort of chicken and egg, but I think, on the other hand, because that committee has been fairly inactive since it was merged, it's also an opportunity for the new members to sort of come up with a scope and, and a direction for it with the council liaison, and with the council's approval, because it just, it just hasn't really been active since it was created, for whatever reason.
Thanks, yeah. It's kind of hard when, like, that's some expertise I could bring-
Yeah.
That would be helpful. But I'll just keep nagging you guys at city council meetings about infrastructure. And I will note, everyone always says, you know, such and such was the thing that was most popular at Election Day. What's always the most popular? Infrastructure. So keep that in mind.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I wonder if the city manager could tell us where we are in the recruitment filling cycle? These have all passed a certain deadline.
Yeah.
When can they be applied for, for new members?
Yeah, so the, we issued advertisements for the, all the open seats. I forget, they went out in April at some point. It, it complied with the guide, the timeframes in the municipal bodies and appointments policy. The deadline for applications was May 8th, and that also complied with the policy. I've accepted a few late stragglers, just because we're missing people. And we even advertise, as in the Times Argus this weekend, even if it's after the date, just because of the fact that we haven't found anyone. So technically, the application period had closed May 8th. But I think, given, you know, the last time we did this, we had sufficient applicants for all the vacant seats, and even had some competitive seats. This is the first time where it's sort of been the opposite. So being a little bit lenient, knowing that everyone had the fair opportunity to apply, but also knowing that nobody did, so. I don't sort of answer your question?
A little. So I guess my question is, if those of us who have, to use Counselor Stockwell's terminology, adopted committees, were to talk them up-
Yeah.
You know, invite people to apply for them, what would the timeline and the process for that look like now?
Okay, so we normally, normally would try to have everyone appointed and seated by July 1. So there's, there's, you know, we have the, in my planning for the council meetings, I have the, you know, blocks of schedule set for June 4th and June 18th. So I think, as long as council's comfortable with sort of applying, accepting applications on a rolling basis, I think if we got people to apply by the end of the month, we could, council could interview them in June, and then they could be seated. Now, we've also, you know, taken applications in the fall, from time to time, when there've been churn on committees, and so there's, there's also another crack at it. But I think if we want to sort of address it now, having applications by the end of this month would sort of give everyone time to vet the candidates, and get them a chance to get interviewed by the council.
By May, or?
End of, I was thinking end of May, because it would, then there's the meetings in June for, for interviews.
So we can forward the current composition of all the committees to you, so you can see where the vacancies are. And we'll get, Nicholas can get that to you this week and talk it up. But it doesn't mean that if a committee, if we get to June 4th or June 18th, and it, and we haven't yet seated members, in other words, no one additionally has, we can always extend that. So talk it up until we fill them. That's kind of the way it is. Super, anything else, Nicholas, under 8D?
No, just on, if the council needs to make a motion, I'm not sure about the liaisons. If you want to, I have a list of sort of who volunteered for what.
Yeah, we can just put that on the consent agenda for next week, in that way, because I think, I've got to think about my current commitments, and what committee I might want to serve on. And I'm not sure that everyone has, I think everyone pretty much has stepped up. So we'll just put it on for next week's meeting, under the consent agenda, if that's okay?
Okay.
Yeah? Yes, ma'am. Do you have?
No, I was just nodding my head.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Counsel, word, item 8E on the agenda. This is authorize one or more counselors to approve weekly warrants on non-meeting weeks. So you all understand the commitment there. Normally, I think I have to, like I said, I forgot to stop by and, and do that. But we need additional, I think what makes most sense is deputy mayor, so that if I can't do it, I'll just email Sam and say, hey, can you? Probably wouldn't hurt to have one extra. Sonia, you're only up on Delmont, so it's not that long a haul.
I would, I would-
Well, you'd be, you'd be the second alternate. So chances are, the only way you'd be called on to sign the warrants, and it's not like you've got to do it, you've got to do it by a certain day. I mean, or would anyone else like to do it?
A volunteer.
Okay, then we'll have-
My only concern is the conflict of interest.
Oh, yeah. We've got a, well, thanks for raising that. We, yeah, because we've got a, I didn't realize that section of the charter that said, yeah. So I'm going to have to have Nicholas work with you on that. But that's okay. So Mr. Dearing will do it. So it would be, so Counsel Stockwell would be the first alternate, Counsel Dearing would be the second alternate, in the event that I couldn't make it down to sign the, the warrants. Any-
We need a motion?
-motion to that effect, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, and a second?
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Counsel, that brings us to Resolution 2024-08, Financial Authorization of Cheryl Motivier, Berry City Clerk and Treasurer. Normally, we would have put this under the consent agenda, but we need to have, as former clerk Dawes called it, robust minutes, reflecting that someone made the motion, seconded the motion, there was no discussion, and so on. So if anyone would care to make the motion to approve Resolution 2024-08, authorizing Cheryl Motivier, newly-elected Berry City Clerk Treasurer, to sign on behalf of the city of Berry, I would appreciate it.
So move.
So move, thank you.
Seconded.
And a second from Counsel Stockwell. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. On the resolution, it says, no, therefore be it resolved. Is that supposed to be so therefore?
Or maybe now.
Now therefore.
I was like, what is no? Okay, so that's now therefore.
An OW, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, well, well proofread.
Copy and so.
I am a proofreader, I think, in my previous life, so.
Carol, so I'm bringing, I'm passing it down, if everyone could sign it, and-
Okay.
The minutes reflect that former clerk Dawes dropped that letter, or?
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. A correction to the existing resolution has been noted and made. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. And lastly, counsel, we are at item 9G on the, excuse me, 8G on the agenda. That is to set the clerk treasurer compensation. Actually, has the clerk as the presenter? Should the clerk be the presenter, or should the manager be the presenter?
Either one, I, I think. Up to Cheryl.
I'd like to present, yeah.
Well, there was a, there was a memo provided to the council that detailed the staff recommendation. Here you go, that's yours. That detailed the staff recommendation. Has that been, oh, that actually goes here.
Yeah, so I shared with counsel sort of the, the various data points. So you have former clerk Dawes' rate at, at her retirement. You have sort of the FY25 approved budget for the position. You have clerk Motivier's salary as, in her prior city position-
Which was assistant.
Which was, well, it was in the finance department. It was-
Oh, okay.
Payroll. So this, this is her, these are, those are the, the data points. You know, just from the staff perspective, we recommended this 7.5% increase to her salary as a city employee, reflecting that when Carol became clerk, she, she also assumed the reduction based on her predecessor, based on the fact that it was, that she was less experienced than that person. So similar metric. So you have sort of what our thinking is from a, an HR standpoint, but it's certainly the, the council's decision to, to set it.
So that would bring the annual salary to?
Fifty-nine, nine, nine, two.
Fifty-nine, nine, nine, two. Any questions from counsel? In terms of the recommendation? Cheryl, would you like to weigh in? Welcome to municipal government, where we get to discuss your salary right out in the open, but that's, that's what the law provides for, so.
I have no objection.
Okay, then if there's, does that divide by 52? Fifty-nine, nine, nine, two. Couldn't round it to 60, huh?
Very precise.
Just couldn't do it. I get it. Precise is good. Would anyone care to make that motion?
So moved, as long as Cheryl's fine with that.
Seconded.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, moved by Counsel Wasasak, executed by Counsel Stockwell, noting that we discussed in open session, yay, the salary level, and there was no objection from the city clerk and treasurer. Any, any other discussion from counsel? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. So counsel, that brings us, nearing the end, that brings us to upcoming business, things that we would like to see on the agenda. I got a whole list of things, but I'm just going to hand them out and let you think about them. And, you know, starting tonight, I asked the city manager to, to talk a little bit about, about our finances, where we are today. Over the next few weeks, I'd like to have a conversation about where we're going in the next budget cycle, what we anticipate the effect to do. And then obviously, the budget cycle coming up, which is going to be extremely challenging. Taking a look at our resources, I think we've all figured out by now that we don't have much of a fund balance anymore. That's going to be pretty much used up after the end of this June 30th, 2024 fiscal year. And we've just got a lot on our plate. We've got a lot going on in the community in terms of flood recovery, looking at paving and sidewalk replacement. Obviously, the North End recovery and mitigation is important to all of us. So these are just a few, you know, things that I want to, would like to speak with the council about, and get your, you know, get to understand what your priorities are, and how we get there. There's a lot of work here, and it's going to be important that we agree on the priority, and agree in, you know, how we get to the other side of these things. So to that end, I'd like to call a meeting next Tuesday. It would be an in-person meeting, but it would not be as formal as this. I'd prefer to have it be sort of a work session, where we sit around a table like that, and just listen to each other, and listen to what, what our priorities are, and start prioritizing, prioritizing things, and talk about how we get there. It's, you know, it's a lot of work. It occurred to me, as I was thinking about things, it occurred to me that I don't even, I can drive through the North End, I can drive through Second Street, Third Street, 02, I can look at homes, and I can make assumptions. But there's currently no place where we actually have an inventory of what is going on with all the properties in the North End. In other words, have people recovered a bit? Is the property vacant? We will have a list, Nicholas, Public Safety is working on that. So when you really think about the problem, and, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of work to do. So I thought it would be helpful even to have a list of properties, so that we could say, well, these folk, this house is vacant. These folks have applied for a buyout. These folks want to stay, and they're trying like heck to be able to stay, but they, they need resources. So it's just a lot of work to do, and I thought, so I'd like to start next Tuesday, just sitting kind of around a table, and if it takes a few hours, great, shouldn't take any more than that. Yes, ma'am?
Previously, when you had made a proposition like that, the- Previously, when you had made a proposition like that, you had structured it so that it was one, one subject on the table. And this sounds like it's freewheeling. Is this, is this going to have a focus? Or, yeah, how?
Sure. Well, I mean, here's my list. Folks may agree with things, they may not agree with things. So yeah, it is, it is freewheeling in some respects. I think there's a lot we can all agree on. I think we agree mitigation is important. I think we agree a North End plan is important, but we may not prioritize things exactly the same way. So it's more working together to try to come up with a list of priorities and then a means to get there. Yes, ma'am?
So I understood we had put in a request to raise the three bridges, because it was Willie, the Willie Street Bridge that tended to act as a dam. That was, seemed to be the worst point, the worst bridge. So it seems like all those three bridges, including North Main Street, need to be fixed if we're going to reduce the chance of flooding. So I would add to that. But also, we already did neighborhood engagement, so are we going to do neighborhood engagement again? And it seems like we do have existing plans for development. Are we going to redo those plans, or are we going to go forward with those plans?
Well, as I, I mean, as I look at the neighborhood engagement, I don't know that we came away from all of those meetings with, we certainly came away with points of view, but we didn't come away with consistent points of view necessarily. So when I talk about continued neighborhood engagement, we may, you know, I don't anticipate that the council would come up with a plan for the North End and say, okay, this is our plan, without first presenting it to our citizens. So that's what I meant by engagement. I mean, you're right, we have had the neighborhood meetings, and we have, we have some limited feedback, but we don't have feedback in all regards. And if we do come up, if we should come up with a final conceptual plan, I certainly would think we'd like to put that in front of the vote, in front of just our neighborhoods, and say, well, what do you think of this? And some people may say, put the grocery store here and put the daycare there, and here's why. Yes, ma'am?
I'm certainly open to and willing to, meaning to discuss priorities next week along the list, and I, it's important to me that we talk about flooding holistically across the entire city. The North End is obviously the site of the biggest impact, the site of the biggest ongoing challenges. But, you know, I dispatched people to every single corner of the city in July and August for houses that had flooded. I talked with people all along the Potashbrook about their own issues with that, with that flooding in the Courier Park area. So obviously, the North End most prominently, but I think that a citywide conversation about both impacted housing and also future planning and mitigation would be important to me.
I agree. And I agree, Sam, with your comments about, you know, the Berlin Street Bridge and the AOT trestle. We'll also discuss briefly whether we want to continue the discussion regarding the removal or replacement of the trestle. AOT recently indicated, as you're all aware, that their preferred direction was to replace the trestle at a cost of $3 million, which has me shaking my head, why you would. What was that bridge in Alaska? The bridge to nowhere?
Yeah.
Is that, yeah.
Trestle supporting nothing.
So that one's got me shaking my head, and I've already made a few phone calls, but, so, you know, those are some of the things that we're going to have to continue to talk about, and obviously, you know, those do affect, and the Courier Park area, just different areas, and if there's different things we can do, be doing throughout the city that have a high impact, absolutely, we should be talking about those as well. So my point here is just that everything's, everything's on the table, but I think we need to, we need to have a plan.
So we would add the most dangerous bridges to this list, and we would, we would look at Y-Tiff District and not a neighborhood improvement area.
Yep.
So we'd look at those different things.
Or should we do both?
Well, wouldn't that be double dipping? And wouldn't that make people cranky?
If, I'm the mayor of Berry, if I can see Berry double dip, I'll double dip all day long.
I think eventually, we would pay a price for that.
Not as long as this full disclosure.
Also, I feel like I, from every community meeting I went to, I heard really strongly that people want more homeownership opportunities. So I would hate to have that lost in any.
We can talk about that Tuesday as well, sure. So, okay, so I'll see you next Tuesday at 6 o'clock. Nicholas will not be here, he'll be driving back from Delaware, so we'll just be, just be the council, but I think that's, that's fine. Okay, roundtable. Counsel Stockwell?
I went to the launch of the Youth First mentoring for Berry City, which I think will be great. It's an opportunity for youth in Berry City to receive their own personal mentor, who will be based upon their interests, and I think this is a great thing to happen to Berry City. And here's the information.
Counsel Spaulding?
I want to thank everyone who voted for me and appreciate the support from Ward 1, and also just let everyone know that in the whole city, that I'm open and available to talk and chat anytime, and I have a lot to learn. I was really lost, most of the, not lost, but just like, what does that mean? And there's a lot of talking really fast, so I'm sure I will have a lot of questions, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Waszczak?
Pass.
Counsel Deering?
You know, want to thank the voters again for their confidence in me, reelecting me for the second term. I promise to continue working hard for doing what's best for Berry, and also being a good representative of what's best for Berry. Was able to attend a Milk and Cookies event at the Aldridge Library last Thursday, it was a really nice event. We had Brenda Waterhouse, the principal at Berry City School, and Kay Cronin, the St. Monica St. Michael's principal, reading stories to kids. It was packed house, it was very beautiful. And then on Saturday, we got to, my family and I, we got to sit and hang out and watch the Berry City Middle Elementary School with a theater production of A Secret Garden by Francis Hodgson. Adam Jacobs, who was sitting here this evening, he's a teacher at the middle elementary school, adapted and directed that play for the high school students, I'm sorry, for the middle school students. It was definitely an amazing display of creativity and a lot of brilliant work by the students. So I just really wanted to highlight those things.
Thank you. Counsel Guston?
Sure, I would, I would like to thank everyone in Ward 2 who got out and participated in democracy, and whatever your choice was, I'm looking forward to working with and for you for Berry City. I also, I haven't had time to do the research yet, but I fully intend by the next time we meet to do the research to see if this is, in fact, the first time we've had a majority women on city council. It was a possibility, I don't know, we'll look into it. But that would be exciting, if so, and I look forward to getting to work.
Counsel Chambel?
I pass.
I'm old, so I think you're going to find the answer is yes. This is the first time there's been a female majority on the city council, which brings me to my next point. I didn't support all of you. It's as simple as that. And many of you didn't support me, but here we are. And we've got 8,000 people depending on us. Now, you have my word, I will be an honest working partner, I'll give it to you straight. I don't take sheep, sheep shots, and I don't give cheap shots. So I look forward to working with all of you. We have a lot of work to do, and a lot of people are depending on us. So with that, motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Well, you can't discuss a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Thank you very much, folks.
Cheryl, I keep thinking over at your tattoo, I'm thinking it's a Wonder Woman, you know, like those.